She's on screen.
She's the, yeah, she's the big J over here.
Oh, okay. Good evening, everyone. We're now going to start our 6:00 PM Subcommittee Conference Meeting.
Counselor, you want the attendance?
And we'll, I'll do, uh, we will run the attendance.
Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor Ozaneda?
Present.
Counselor Ray Cooper?
Yeah.
Counselor Garcia?
This meeting is being recorded.
Counselor Vega Maldonado? Counselor Robertson? Counselor Rodriguez? Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Counselor Lopez? Counselor Brown? Counselor Zabit? One, two, three, four, five. You have six members.
We have six members, five here and Judith on, on Calvin's on the way. And we have the following matter to be, to be discussed. The proposed budget for FY 2022. Officials invited to attend tonight's meeting is the City Manager Tom Ambrosino, Ed Dunn, Cheryl Watson, Patrice Montefusco, Almi Albada, Leonard Albizi, and all members of the public. So with that, I, I know that we have this in front of our packet in front of us. I do have the proposed school committee and the budget in front of us. So at any time, if the city manager wants me to have a shared screen, let me know and I'll put that up there. I'll now let the city manager address the city council, begin the 21, 2021 budget hearings.
Thank you, Mr. President. So you have before you our proposed FY 22 budget.
You can take the mask off.
Take the mask off.
It helps us with the hearing, with the sound.
So you have before you the FY 22 proposed budget. It's a, a much more positive document than what was submitted last year. Last year, as you recall, we needed almost $5 million of support for our, our annual budget. The budget presented before you has a much more modest structural deficit of just under $900,000. That's pretty much in line with every budget that I've submitted and that my predecessor has submitted. We always supplement it with a little bit of free cash. And so this budget does include some additional salaried positions. Some of them were positions that were cut during last year to save money when we didn't know the financial impacts yet of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in some of those offices, particularly law or in HR and housing community development, it's clear that the workload demands that we restore those positions and we're doing that. In most, in some cases, we're doing it as in the case of law as of September 1 and basically we use the summer to get through the hiring process. The budget also includes the new DEI office that you funded, approved last year and that office will commence roughly on July 1st. The new director will be here a few days early. So that's the budget that you have before you. We'll go through each department's proposal and answer any very specific questions that you have. And I'm always available to answer any questions outside of these proceedings as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to the individual budget department head presentations and we can start with Cheryl.
Hi, everyone. I'm Cheryl Watson Fisher, the city solicitor. Just to give you a quick overview, the city law department represents all of you, the boards and commission members, the employees. We pretty much defend the city against any and all lawsuits and pursue lawsuits on behalf of the city. We also represent the school department on some matters. They do have outside counsel as, as, just like the city. The city's law department is also the municipal hearing office, public records liaison. So we do, as, as a law department, we provide a lot of benefits, not just to staff and elected officials, but also to the public. So as to the law department, I believe I'm here tonight on three budgets. So I'm first gonna go forward with the, um, the law department budget. As Tom just stated, we, um, throughout the past year have been down one full-time assistant city solicitor. It was a little beneficial since school just began. We can see the reasons why we need another, um, full-time, um, in-house lawyer to perform some of the investigations that we do on behalf of the school department. The law department budget has changed slightly. Besides that added, um, increase of our salary, we also have a 2,000 new line about miscellaneous office supplies. As you know, we have costs such as summons cost us money, forms at the, um, um, at the courthouse. Just a lot of, um, items we realized that are not typical. So with the meeting with the procurement office, we realized that we needed a little bit more supply budget than the standard pens and paper and so forth and so on in the law department. So we did add that back in. We had that line many, many years ago. Also, one of the prior milestones of the last year was getting through the COVID-19 and a whole slew full of, um, different types of agreements that even the other cities and solicitors and town councils called me up and said, "How'd you do it, Cheryl?" So we, um, got to spend a lot of time just meeting our fellow, um, town councils and city solicitors in the area. We, we're meeting every two weeks now, monthly, just to discuss how do we do our work the same way we do our work, but in the middle of a pandemic. So that, that was, um, really key this past year in the law department. Moving forward, I think we gotta bring everyone back to what the open meeting law is, what the public records law is, so that we continue to comply with also ethics. So, um, that is our goal. We do have a new hire. Our long-term legal secretary retired at the end of March. We hired a new Chelsea resident as a paralegal slash legal secretary. So that's the law department. Any questions?
Yeah, when would be our factory?
The first week of April, the new hire came. For the new assistant city solicitor will be September.
And is that full-time?
That will be full-time.
Okay, thank you.
And I apologize, Mr. President, for the late call.
Counselor Robertson, any questions?
Interviewed or he already, he's already assigned?
So we're gonna probably start the hiring process once this budget is approved and just create, we already have the job description, as you know. We've hired assistant city solicitors in the past.
If I could just add one thing, Counselor, is to the salary budget, you'll notice that it's down some. And the reason for that is that the school department has provided a larger contribution this year to the law department than in previous years. So that, the effect of that is that the salary from the general fund is down as a result. It's roughly doubled. It went from about $75,000 to about $150,000 on the school side.
Is that in, Mr. President? Is that in way of the hours that the law department's spending? Are you spending more hours there? Matters or?
So they used to only do part-time salary of the assistant city solicitor, but the bullying and the harassment and the Title IX issues that are involved with the school department and the training. Remember, the school department employment size is twice the size of the city. So yes, it's a direct response to the needs of the school department.
So can you explain to us what that person does?
Which person?
The person that works directly when you go into the, um, school department. Are, are they in the office or are they still in your office?
They sit in my office. They do everything that an assistant city solicitor would do, but they help balance. We're very lucky this year. Stefan Tredway, who's my assistant now, we both deal with the school investigations. There weren't many because they weren't on campus, the two, the students this year. But we've had a couple of teacher issues and so forth and so on. I am involved in my offices. We answer questions all day long from the administration. It's easier to pick up the phone or call us than to pay $2, you know, whatever the now with their private counsel. Whenever there's a union issue, private counsel will represent the school committee and I would represent the superintendent's point of view.
Thank you.
Any other counselors' questions? City Solicitor, my question is the following. We have gone through a couple of Subcommittee meetings and executive sessions and talked about trainings. And I know that we're not only doing trainings even for the city, for our city council, but there is probably many trainings that go on for our personnel across the board. Where is that covered? Do we have an idea in the budget of where trainings are paid for? I don't expect it to be, is it, is it under legal services or?
So open meeting laws and ethic trainings are free from the Commonwealth. The trainings that I do with the school department is on harassment and discrimination and civil rights. Employees, we, um, I know HR has done some and HR has some budget for trainings. I believe it's under person, the HR director. The law department, I mean, my staff, there's dues and subscriptions. Sometimes my staff, we go to updates on our own legal trainings.
If I could add, there are two places in this budget where there's significant money for training. One is in the human resources department. You'll see that they've, their typical, last year their training number was 10,000. We've increased it to 15,000. And then there is a training component of the DEI office's budget that you approved last year. We, you'll see there aren't line items in that budget, but you previously approved a budget for that office that included about $35,000 for training over two years. So that exists as well. So both of those offices, human resources and DEI, have good chunks of training in it. Now, over time, we might figure out where the training money is better appropriated in one of those as opposed in both. But for this coming year, each of those departments will have a chunk of money for training.
Counselor Cooper?
Ms. Cheryl, is your budget going down or it seems here you went down 5%?
So as, um, the salaries went down because the school department is taking over quite a bit more of our salaries paying out of the school budget. So that's why it looks like it went down a lot. I think it's another $75,000 a year.
So, but, so the difference that the school was making up and it's, it's just you pay your employees less?
No. Part of my, like, for example, my pay comes out of two lines. It comes out of the city and it comes out of the school.
Okay, your employees do the same thing?
Huh?
Your, your workers do the same thing, right?
So over the years, it's always been, um, me, the secretary and part of the assistant or however auditing has decided to disprove it.
We've allocated it to all positions this year. So there's, there's, I'm not sure if you got the FTE listing. I think Tom had emailed that, but there's a section of that that shows the school fund at the bottom and how much is allocated.
But, but now the school is paying less.
So the assistant solicitor position is funded at 50% on the city and 50% on the schools.
Or it went 50/50?
50/50. Others are 70/30, 45/55. So there's, there's a breakdown that's commensurate with the responsibilities that the people in the law department are
Thank you.
putting forth for the school department.
For example, the secretary handles student records requests. So there's a lot of school-only items that my staff also helps out.
Thank you. Oh, just, we have two other departments that Cheryl's responsi, I'm sorry about that feedback. Two other departments that Cheryl's responsible for, judgments and licensing. The judgments line is Department 941.
On page 172. I just might take the opportunity to point out, we took your comments last year to heart and provided this comprehensive one document for you. So you really don't need anything in front of you other than this one budget document. And I really wanna thank Fidel Meltes, who really worked hard on this, along with Kate Fox Lent, the new business manager up there. They together really did yeoman's, yeoman's work in putting this document together. And so it's the one doc, it's the only thing you really need tonight is this document. For judgments, we're looking at page 172.
I know I was a little tough on you guys last year, but I appreciate the, uh...
This is a line that is level funded on its budget for $50,000. And it's also a line that we have the statutory authority to go into deficit on as authorized by the DOR. So next week, you'll be receiving from the city managers some, some supplemental funding requests for departments that will be in deficit. And this is one of those departments that is in deficit. Approximately $80,000 for some litigation that Cheryl and her group has gone through on behalf of the city. So we fund this comfortably at the same number each year. Some years it's lower, some years it's not. In FY 21, we have approximately $80,000 more that will be needed and you'll see that next week.
The judgments line is for settlements of claims and lawsuits and outstanding, um, matters.
Does anyone have any questions on these? Counselor Cooper?
On, on the liability insurance, right? Do we have an outside firm or is it the city that covers itself?
So when you say liability insurance, we do have insurance. And, um, so insurance covers deductible sometimes. So car accidents are covered by insurance. Flip and falls are covered by insurance. If it goes to a lawsuit, they will assign an attorney. I always have to approve or disapprove of the attorney. And there's several different firms that they use depending on that, uh, the allegations against the city. So excessive force claims, all those matters are represented by the insurance company. Insurance pays for it. We would have a deductible. Not everything they pay for, but yes. Not administrative hearings like, um, civil service. They would not do that.
I could just add one other point on, on that for the liability insurance. This page, 172 in your budget book, has judgments that Cheryl's responsible for and liability insurance that Patrice is responsible for. So when she comes to talk on the treasury budget, she'll also be talking to you on the liability insurance.
Counselor Taylor?
So $50,000 for claims and judgments, that doesn't seem like a very big number when it comes to claims and judgments. You know, one good whack and it's gone, um, or maybe two, you know. If it's just, uh, those lawyers are pretty expensive, so, um, seriously, it doesn't seem like a big number. So is it, are, are the claims and judgments that we have, like, you know, smaller claims types?
We do. We, we have some people who get illegally towed or wrongfully towed. So we'll pay about $300, $400 so they get the ticket written off and the tow back, right? So those are small. But then if we have a deductible and a discrimination case,
Yeah, it's $25,000.
So it just depends on that year and, yeah. And, um, some years, sometimes it's an old claim or a, let's just say a bill went unpaid. We know we're at fault. We have to pay it. And, and, and so sometimes to head off litigation, sometimes you wanna settle them out, so. $50,000 has been the standard. I think maybe once in the past 17 years, I've seen it at 100 or 75, but, um, you know.
Okay.
We're pretty good here. We try to keep it low.
I mean, it seems to me that, that if we're, you know, if, if we're, if we're under $100,000 for, for, for something like this, that's getting off pretty cheap, I would say. I mean...
Yeah, we've been pretty good in most years that I've been here. This year, we do have a deficit, but my memory is it's generated by one old contractor's claim where there was a bill that was unpaid and we settled. And it was a big chunk. It was like $60,000 on dollars. And that, I think, is generating the deficit for FY 21.
Okay. I, I was just, I was just wondering because that seems like an awfully low number for a budget, but, but so be it. Thank you.
But again, it's, it's one of those accounts like snow and ice where you're legally authorized to go into deficit.
Yeah.
Counselor Brown?
Doesn't the liability cover most of it on this?
So flip and falls, we don't have a deductible. Car accidents, we're pretty covered under that. MCAD, no. You know, I mean, discrimination claims are big. We do get, we may have to be on the hook for legal fees for excessive, um, force, but not many because we represent police department, someone represents the police officer. But these are really claims that we wanna settle 'cause we, we find that the city was at fault. So we'll, we'll settle them for 500, $1,000. And, um, that's why 50,000 is a reasonable amount except for the deductibles for some of the case, uh, insurance claims.
Right.
We're somehow avoiding the lawsuits and paying the small claims, basically.
Because you have a good attorney.
And, and on top of that, what about the liabilities? Doesn't the liabilities cover the meat of all that, the, um, so, the suits?
So the insurance company covers most. So let's say we wrongfully terminated someone and went through arbitration. Insurance doesn't cover that.
It does not?
No.
Okay.
So we may have to settle back pay and, you know, with interest.
Okay, but those are really the small things that, that's why it's always been that way. Is that correct?
So it's always been that way because we do really try to, um, settle if necessary and, and head off major lawsuits that would cost the city money.
Okay. I get it, but, I get it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any other items that the city solicitor needs to speak on?
Yes, so the licensing department is the third area of responsibility for Cheryl's department.
Page 71.
Page 70?
71 and 72.
So while you're looking at that, I'll tell you a little bit about what licensing did do this past year. Licensing is basically the licensing administrator. And then one of my clerks does a lot of the support with her. So this past year, licensing has been trying to muddle through the pandemic and make sure that our businesses are in compliance with the new changes every month of reopening or closing. Licensing also, you know, we, we issue a lot, a lot of licenses and permits. Each other month is a new deadline for someone to renew. She did very well with, um, making sure we lowered some of the costs that council requested this year when we did renewals. We're out there just making sure once ABCC found some people in violations, we had the meetings, we had the suspension hearings. So licensing was extremely busy this year. We constantly sent out emails to update what's going on, what is expected of them. Going forward though, in reopening, licensing in the city manager's office and the, um, community, the housing and development office have started outdoor seating. You should see more and more of that coming out. A lot of our businesses used it last year and a lot want to use it this year. But licensing needs to make sure people are compliant with our regular rules and regulations now. We're starting to open up and we have that nightlife that we need to control. And at the same time, we have a lot of businesses not renewing, not coming back or changing names. And so this year, we're gonna try to be more consumer affairs, sit down and meet with people and discuss how they can open a business in Chelsea or what the rules and regulations in Chelsea are. The licensing budget, you will notice, there was a $5,000 increase because we have this online permitting that we share with Parks and Recreation and some other departments. So basically, our City Grows programming does public records, does claims, does all the licenses. Most of them are now online in English and Spanish. The city manager's office has helped us with that. So if you wanna hold a parade or an event, you go to one site and it prompts you to get the other licenses that you may need in Chelsea. So that, um, software per year, we negotiated for $5,000 and we put that in the licensing department, which really is for bo, um, community schools and, and recreation and law too, because public records and claims are also online. And actually, if you wanted to appeal your 40U ticket, your trash ticket, you could do that online now too.
Counselor Brown?
You brought up the pandemic this year. How, how were you with some of the, the violations? Did we give out a lot of breaks or did we just kinda realize that it was a tough time and we just didn't enforce a lot of the violations?
It was mostly education.
Yeah, it was a lot about education. I think the ABCC did more of that heavy hitting, shut you down until you came back with a plan. It was more about learn about the COVID and what is expected from you and then you could open up again. A lot of our businesses weren't open initially. Naomi would tell them you can do delivery, you can even have alcohol delivered. So it was more education about what they could do to stay open. Now it's more about enforcement and not just doing whatever you want to do just because you're open, yeah.
There was one more part of the question that I was gonna ask. I know, um, folks were, now have to start reading up their permits and licenses and the fees and stuff. Are we looking to, um, offer any assistance or is it just gonna, we're back on the normal page now?
So I know for outdoor seating, the Community Development Office, Housing and Development is offering monies to help with outdoor seating plans and the infrastructure that goes al, along with it. No one has really, we have a taxi issue we wanna work out in, in the licensing department, but no one has really asked us to lower our fees. Our fees are generally on the low side.
Right.
So, um, no one has asked us that yet. There has not been a discussion about renewals. We're trying to, we're starting to collect funds from marijuana companies that are, we have two licensed marijuana companies operating. One is retail, one is cultivation.
And those two are?
Western Front is retail and then AD Eastern Ave has only received their cultivation license, but they will be retail and manufacturing when they're ready.
Okay. The reason why I asked that on Pro Long is because I know you said that a lot of places was closed down or was doing very small business, but they may say, "Hey, by the way, I didn't make the, that money last year. I know I gotta pay my taxes. What are we gonna do to help them?" And that's why I brought that question up.
Yeah, so we, we've had a lot of grant programs for small business, including this outdoor dining one that we just launched. We had our Small Business Assistance Program where you could provide, where we provided money to small business for, meeting their basic expenses. So we did, I feel, do a good, uh, job at
I think we did.
helping small businesses through this pandemic.
I think we actually did a good job, but I'm just saying, moving forward, are we back, you know, we, we going back into the normal state? You know, if your license is due, your renewal fees are due, you know, that's the question I was talking about.
I would expect as we start getting into the discussion of the use of the discretionary ARPA funds, the piece that we're not gonna set aside for lost revenues, as I think I mentioned to you in a memo I sent out a couple of months ago, small business assistance is one of the clear objectives of ARPA money. And so this'll be a discussion that we certainly can have. I would expect that we're gonna spend some piece of that for small business assistance just as we did with Federal Cares Act.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Thanks, Cheryl.
Counselor Robertson?
Are they using plastic or glass outside when, with outside seating?
The licensing commission says no glass. Those are their rules and regulations.
And as Calvin asked about the fees, the normal fee that they'd have to pay to renew the license, are gonna be the same or is it gonna be cut in half like you did last year?
So they, I mean, they're only six years into this year. They're, they're, so you have to understand that the highest fee is the liquor license, right?
Right.
And most of our licensees who served alcohol were open throughout the pandemic. And they, they had reasonably lowered fees at that time. We did not do it for the liquor stores and the convenient one, convenience stores that sell alcohol, but we did for the restaurants.
One of the reasons these questions are asked about that, you go back out there, this is what the public is asking, especially the business community, don't get any every day.
So we did lower renewal fees in December of twenty twenty and, uh, I don't, we haven't even given that any thought for twenty twenty-one.
And they all pay.
Okay.
Council Recupro.
Cheryl, uh, the expenditures went up, right, on, over here?
On licensing?
Yeah, by seventy-six percent, right?
Yeah.
Total expenditures?
Yeah.
Why, why they went up so much?
Um, because we had, we're responsible for that five thousand dollar, um, fee for the software, the online, um, applications for licensing, doing it for the law department and, um, also the community schools and recreations.
It's just one item. It's five thousand dollars for the City Grows subscription and they're picking it up in licensing.
Oh, is that why it went up that much?
That's why it went up.
That's exactly why it went up.
Um, there was a note, a notice there that the, the salary part, regular salary, thirty-six thousand and then F Y twenty-one adopted was fifty-seven and now proposed a sixty-three thousand, jumping, uh, nearly six thousand dollars. How did that step happen? Is that part of the bargaining or can you explain the increase of six thousand dollars, a significant jump there?
So she probab- Let me just, and then you can, so Naomi probably, probably got a step increase in the midst of F Y twenty-one. So, uh, that would have bumped up her annual salary. And then this budget, I should mention this as well. This budget reflects all of the, all of the collective bargaining salary increases for F Y twenty-two with three exceptions that I'll talk about in one second. Most of the bargaining units got somewhere between two point seven five and three percent increases. And those are all reflected in here. So, uh, that would be, that, her number is going to reflect a, uh, a step increase during the course of twenty-one, a step increase during the course of twenty-two and a, uh, I think she's a steel worker?
Yes.
So they are getting three percent in fiscal year twenty-two and that's all reflected in here.
What triggers the, uh, step increases?
Uh, year of service. Another, each year you get a step increase until you max out on their steel workers' schedule. There's seven steps for new employees and eight for older employees. Seven for new employees.
In that bargaining unit, yeah.
They, they're really, you're maxing a step.
Correct. Yeah, and then you just get the collective bargaining increases. But in the interim, you get step increases each year.
Then after that, what happens is they just get contractual increases.
Correct, correct. All, uh, steel workers and S C I U all have step increases that have been in effect here for years and years and years, yeah.
So we now have a city employee at eighty percent A M I and can't, uh, go into any of the affordable housing agreements?
Yes. Who just got her twenty years with the city.
Yep. All right. I want to keep that of note on a separate, completely separate subject, but at this point, we have a sixty-three thousand dollar employee making sixty-three, close to sixty-four thousand dollars. Is at eighty percent A M I and is not qualified for any of the affordable housing units around here. Just for note. Just to make sure that sixty, you realize that sixty-three thousand dollars isn't really a lot of money.
It really isn't.
Okay. Um, Council Lopez.
Um, Naomi Libran or Libran?
Libran.
Been here?
So Naomi's born and raised, I think, in Chelsea, but she's been a city employee. It was twenty years last week.
But it was.
Started off in parking enforcement, I think.
Yeah, she was actually a parking control officer.
Was she working for the department for a long time though?
Not my department. So since I've been in Chelsea, she was in the clerk's office, payroll, police department. She's been with me about a year and a half.
Oh, she's moved from, from department to other department?
Yeah. She's staying with me, not for now.
You charging a rent?
Um, any, the, the question I have is, uh, where, I, I don't see the, um, the revenue stream. Uh, where would I find the revenue stream from the licensing fees?
There would, there should have been a, a communication that the city manager sent to council.
So attached to my May first, twenty twenty-one letter was a summary of the budget, a like, uh,
Three pager, I see it right here.
It's, uh,
And this expenditure details.
Fifteen pages at the end and licenses will be in the revenue section on page twelve.
Page twelve.
Licenses and permits and that shows you, uh, the, what we're budgeting in twenty twenty-two and what we reflected on the twen- twenty-one tax recap sheet for actual collections in twenty twenty.
So we're looking at, uh, close to almost one point three million dollars?
On all licenses and permits.
That's on all. That's not just licensing with Cheryl. The, the top part of that licenses various down to licenses hackneyed. There's maybe a dozen.
Oh, okay, I understand now. Okay, I see that. So, uh, there's construction in there and shouldn't be part of it, so.
Yeah, that's through I S D.
So if we look at maybe just the top, top units, we're looking at, uh, right, so the perm, it's, so, so, so the licenses is Herb, Herb Division or the part of licensing and the permits are more to I S D.
And some are fire.
And some are fire. Okay.
And some do, um, the clerk's office and some is through border house.
So if I just talked, if I drop off, just, uh, I mean, there may be something on below license hackneyed, but if I keep from license hackney and above ninety, um, you're looking at close to almost four hundred thousand dollars? Got it?
Yes.
Does that sound about right?
Yes.
Um, to the city solicitor and from one point in need to, um, city manager, um, one of the goals here is enforcement, um, of our ordinances, license rules and such. We do have a police department as the enforcement arm, I would say, or no?
So the police department has been training and assigned the enforcement of our alcohol and, uh, our alcohol licenses and they mainly do it nighttime. They do help during the day. Inspection services does some of it. That's who we call if we need to make sure, um, a illegal yard sale or a festival is going on. But, um, we would like.
Restaurant would be, uh, for example, Richie Zulo?
Yeah, Hector, Hector does a lot of it for us and, um, Leo does a lot for us. Um, on the weekends, it could be any inspector. I believe there's a rotation. But, um, there's no one who would like walk in and say, you should have an entertainment license for that. They go and enforce. If we have a call, can you just double check and make sure this isn't happening? So they do try to help out, but we don't really have that one person who's signed to licensing enforcement.
Council Recupro.
Hey, Cheryl, over, over here, right?
Over which?
It says, um, on, on this se- section here, on the budget.
On the budget of the revenue detail.
Page twelve, page twelve.
Page twelve of the revenue.
Yes.
All right, it says sidewalk occupancy is zero. So you're not charging any money because of the pandemic? After the pandemic, are you going to start charging people for sidewalks?
So that's not me. That's, um, D P W does sidewalk occupancies. That's when you pull a sidewalk occupancy permit to fix an awning.
So they're responsible for that, not you?
No, I do sidewalk sales.
Sidewalk sales.
And people did not do a lot. It's like permit sidewalks and streets. That's actually D P W too. I'm not quite sure what sidewalk.
Yeah, it might be that they've just bundled that item into sidewalk streets permits.
Yes, but sidewalk sales didn't really take place last year, but the new permit is on, um, line now. It will be online, yeah.
And another one too, um, visitors passes and what, what is, resident stickers? Are they selling the stickers again?
Those are through the clerk's office.
That's through the clerk's office, so I'm not quite sure. We don't do that in licensing.
Well, over here says resident sticker forty thousand.
It's not her, it's not her department. It's not her department.
So why is it with you?
It's in all license fees.
This is for all licensing permits, not just mine. That's why.
So, so this breakdown
It's everybody.
consists of the type of revenue. So on this page, it's licenses and permits and that is in multiple departments. I S D.
Well, I understand. So I get it now. Part of it is R S and part of it is not. You're putting them all combined together, but they're different pieces altogether of different departments that have them.
Exactly.
Because it's all lumped as licenses and permits.
So what is the actual ones you run?
So on this list that's listed, I could tell you, we do, yeah. Okay, we do the alcohol beverages, the common victualas, the amusement, the tobacco.
Cheryl, you don't have to say it.
Okay.
Mr. Roy showed me.
Everything that says licenses on that, on the top part of the page.
Okay, so you get the money for the parks?
No.
What, it says licensing parks?
Um, I don't get that. That goes through recreation and they, I don't even believe they actually charge a fee right now, but that's through, um, B Cravata's department.
Yeah, so, that's it.
Roughly. It used to be.
It's really, yeah.
It used to be.
Yeah, it's an old term. It used to be through the licensing department.
You're not going to do it those.
I do have a, if you're playing music at the park, yes, but not just to use the park.
Oh, so there's two sections of that? When they play music, it comes to you?
Yes, so all entertainment goes through the, the licensing department. The use of public space, meaning the Bellingham Square or Chelsea Square Park or Vogue Park, the use of the space, I don't believe we charge a fee right now, goes through parks and recreation.
Okay, thank you.
Council Brown. So, so those at home, I'll repeat your question so it's on the microphone.
So, um, I'm going to back up because, like, when folks want to do, I've got the announcement, I think you're doing yourself, I think it would be. What if someone wants to do like an outdoor festival? Are we open for that right now? What do they have to do?
So the question to the chair is, just for the those at home and don't have here, the ability to hear through the microphone, is that, um, is the ability of anyone to have a festival now open due to the upcoming restriction lifts on the COVID regulations?
So the short answer is yes, you may. We do require, um, there's a committee of staff so that all departments look at these applications and you apply online. They're called a, a special events permit. Um, we'd like forty-five days notice because there's a lot of departments involved when you hold a festival, such as police and fire and inspectional services and licensing. So yes, there, there is, if you go to the, you can go on City Grows with the city, um, online permitting and it's called special events. That's a special event. If you want a parade, if you want a festival, if you want a yard sale, huh?
Even just a march. If you wanted to do a march.
So if you want to do it on public property, it's special events. If you're doing it on your own property, call the licensing department.
You need one for your own property too?
So if you're just having a backyard party, no, but if you're opening it up for the public, yes.
In response to the earlier question, just this, uh, ability of, uh, some sort of ad hoc enforcement policy, um, the city manager, do you believe that, uh, it may be time, given the, uh, volume or the number of, uh, bars, restaurants, um, and such, that there may be a time to have an actual dedicated, uh, enforcement officer of some sort that can go, um, at different times of the week, um, to review and, um, basically investigate not only claims, but possible establishments that open up without, uh, acknowledgement. For example, there was a, uh, right across the street, the, we had a restaurant that had a TV and no one knew that the place even had a TV for over a year and these sort of things have slipped by. Um, so I'm wondering if it's a glaring, uh, example that, uh, this ad hoc, ad hoc approach to enforcement isn't working?
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, I, I wouldn't, I don't feel that we need a, another dedicated employee for just that purpose. The police department has a group of officers that do licensing enforcement. They are fairly aggressive. Uh, Captain Houghton is out there most every weekend, uh, checking licensed, all alcohol licensed establishments. And we were fairly aggressive this year, particularly we got a lot of help from the A B C C during COVID. So we combined forces with them and we were out there pretty aggressively. Uh, they shut down a handful of businesses for COVID violations. Uh, I, I feel that we have adequate resources, particularly with our police department, to enforce the al- alcohol license issues. For the other, you know, I, I would concede that when the police go into a facility, they're not particularly looking to see if there's an extra TV in there that's not licensed. They're more focusing on the alcohol related things. So could we have some additional help for those kind of smaller violations? Perhaps. I just don't know that it's worth hiring another employee. Maybe we just figure out a way to make better use of existing I S D resources. I, I, I would say that one place where we might use additional help generally and where perhaps a person could do some additional licensing support as part of that job is in I S D. I mean, that's one, that is one department where if I'm looking at adding resources in F Y twenty-three, I S D is probably a place I would look. And it's possible a person that's added there, whether it's part-time even, could provide some additional licensing support. So that would be my response to your question.
May I just jump in? So I think what you're looking for is like someone, an engagement person. Sort of like what, um, Sandoval did on the new trash stuff is to go and explain to people what is required of them. There were some businesses that I know Naomi really, if she had the time, could get out and look at all the laundromats and say, why don't you have entertainment and amusement here? You don't have a license. So those are things that we do want to do, but to explain to them why and what the process is. The police is really to say you're in violation and we need a better engagement with the businesses as opposed to just enforcement, especially during the daytime. There's a lot of daytime businesses like barber shops and hair salons and nail salons that we just want to talk to them about, not necessarily get them in trouble. So, but I S D is so busy, that department, as Tom just said, really needs staffing. I just don't know where you would put them.
Well, I would, I would, I would, I would concur that I think that, uh, having just, to my knowledge, only one food inspector, one person who goes to the weights and measures, the gas stations, one person that visits the nail salons and barber shops and such, and I believe that person is Richie Zulo, I think that would be just one person to do all of those checkups in a year, uh, may not be enough. So, uh, possibly a part-time just to, uh,
It's actually two people.
Oh, is it? Who's the second person?
Maria is, does food permits. They just, the food permits are being renewed now and they're issuing quite a few.
She's half food and half.
She's half house, yeah.
Okay.
But I, I, that is probably the department that next needs some additional personnel.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you very much. If you're hungry, grab a slice of pizza while you're on your way out. Um, we also now have on, left on the list is, uh, Patrice Montefisco. What page are we starting to?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
There are two divisions that Patrice will be speaking on. The first is in the treasurer's office, the main area of her responsibility, and the second is on liability insurance that we touched on earlier.
Good evening, everybody. I'd just like to say, um, at the treasurer's office, we have seven employees right now in the treasurer's office. We manage the finances, all the deposits and investments of the city. We also do the funding of all the payroll and vendor warrants and make sure all the funds are in place when reconciling with the auditing department. The revenues we collect are water, sewer and trash. That's a monthly invoice. Uh, real estate and personal property, which are quarterly bills. Excise tax, the first main bill goes out in February and we have six or seven small commitments. Excise tax, the first main bill goes out in February, and we have six or seven small commitments during the rest of the year. Parking is daily. Um, each department collects funds, the fire department, ISD, city clerk, and the next day they turn the funds over to us, and we process those on a daily basis. One of the, um, big accomplishments we did this year was the renovation of our, um, office, which included the mailroom, which is, um, one sole central support office for all, um, mailing and distribution of anything needed. What happens is, um, we now take every, everybody can come directly into the mailroom and get whatever they need, and they don't have to interact with us, and, and it helps, it helps us do our job more efficiently. And, um, the other, the other thing is, um, we, we just included the donations for the veterans, which is, um, which has come in a lot for one quarter, like fourteen hundred dollars so far, so thank you for that. And, um, the budget, our, our payroll, there's no changes other than union increases and step increases for the payroll, uh, the expenses. With the renovation of the mailroom, we have included the, um, mailing and stuffing machines, so all the machines are all centrally located in one, one department. So that increased, um, our equipment maintenance for the folding and stuffing machine. Um, the other increase was the registry of deeds. Right now, um, they're a hundred and five dollars per... Yeah, for filing of, um, a tax taken or a redemption, and they used to be seventy-five dollars. And we have another decrease, which was banking services. Um, our lockbox services are free now. Um, we have communicated with a bank that will give us services for free, so that decreased our banking services. And, um, the only other item is, we, we combined the assistant treasurer and the assistant collector as one, so our surety bond went down a little bit.
Okay, I'm pulling up your, um, budget right there, and I'll allow any of my colleagues, if you have any questions regarding the proposed budget for F Y twenty-two. If the city manager or Mr. Dunn have anything to add prior to. Counsel Brown?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Dr. Pierre. Um, what was the reason and why did the, um, effect of the increase from seventy-five dollars to one oh five?
So the question for those at home and in here on the microphones, when was the, when is the implementation of the increased fee on the real estate?
That went up in January first. So it'll hit our next budget more than it did this year.
And are you back at full staff in the office? I don't think there's been a renovation with that.
We, we've had full staffing since June.
Counsel Recupro.
In your office, right?
Wait, sorry.
There's gonna be...
Hold on, hold on. I apologize. Um, I believe that you have to recuse yourself from this section.
I gotta leave?
You gotta leave. Apologize, I just recognized the...
Office.
Office. Any other questions? Counsel Robbins?
I'm good.
No one? Okay, well, I guess that is...
The second division is the liability insurance.
Liability insurance?
One seventy-two.
One seventy-two.
That's level funded. Um, the school department pays a portion and the city pays a portion, and, um, the school department's been helping us out because their budget's actually higher than us, so we can level fund ours.
We'd like to see level funding.
Doesn't mean the expenses aren't going up, but just the school department's kicking it a little more.
Okay. Anything else? Any, so I didn't get a chance to see the, uh, goals for next year. Uh, sorry I didn't ask, so would you like to, uh, talk a little bit about, uh, what your goals are for the upcoming year?
Our, our goals, um, what we, what we've been doing lately is, is we've been having everybody learn each other's jobs, because we've been shorthanded sometimes at the window, so we'll have backup. So everybody's going to learn each other's jobs so they can back up each other. We're about forty to fifty percent of that right now, and hopefully by the end of the year, everybody, you know, will have a backup.
And this explanation, this question about the, uh, being more aggressive on our C D and money market accounts, what's the, uh, how do you go about that? Can you explain that?
Right now, I've been, um, putting more money into the CDs. They've been a little bit better than the money market accounts. And when, when I see the, the market changing, I, I take it back and put it into the money market account. We go up to six months to a year on some CDs, and, um, the last CD we got, like, for six months, we got thirty-three thousand dollars. If you put it into a money market right now, you're only getting like ten basis points on it.
Are you limited by the law to not buy Bitcoin?
Yes. We have to be extremely conservative in our investments.
We, we only deal with, um, we, we use Veribank, and when we use, you know, the three stars, only banks with, you know, green.
So it is only savings accounts, money market accounts? You cannot purchase anything like a, a five-year bond, treasury notes, or anything of that nature?
We have a policy, an investment policy that we follow, uh, which has been provided to the city council. It's one that's been in effect for a while, but it did generally require to be conservative investors.
So, um, is it, so do we have an advisor on for that, or is it, uh, up to you, the treasurer, who make those decisions? Is there someone that we...
I make the final decision, but we do have an, uh, an advisor. We, we do, um, our stabilization and our, um, general O P E B account with them.
Mm-hmm.
And they can go out to do different things for us, but they have to follow our investment rules.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Sorry.
I'm just going to, um, I'm going to, um, so we don't have like a, um, someone to analyze or mark up our proposal?
Yes, we do. Bartholomew.
Who did it?
Bartholomew.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. All right. No further questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now have, um, I see that the school superintendent is on next. Is she present?
Do you want to skip auditing and come back to it?
What was that?
Do you want to skip auditing and come back to it?
Oh, is auditing next?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Page forty-one. 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 Page forty-one.
On page forty-one, so we're not going to move on Cheryl. So the auditing department is responsible for oversight, compliance, accuracy of postings. We enforce regulations, statutes, laws. We need to make sure that the postings to the general ledger are accurate, that they're coming from the right, um, places and going to the right places. We ensure grant management as required by the funding authorities. Overall, busy, very busy in making certain that, as Patrice had mentioned, with, with revenues and expenses, that we have reconciliations that go through the treasurer's office as well. There's quite a bit that we handle. We, previous to, to this coming year, had overseen the payroll operation for the city, the accounts payable operation, the budgeting, the general ledger management, and the overall review of finance and finances for the city. You'll notice that the budget has decreased in the salary, and there are a couple of other lines as well in the introductory letter that the city manager provided on the budget. He mentioned the separation of the payroll unit to a distinct separate office outside of auditing. So we will be, assuming it's approved, we'll be moving in that direction to separate out the payroll function from the auditing department into its own standalone unit supervised by the treasurer's office. So as a result, you'll see a drop in sixty-five thousand dollars on the salary. That's the payroll supervisor, Wendy, who is associated with our office, who will be transferring over to the payroll unit. The twelve hundred dollar unused sick leave bonus is also reflective of that move. In the operations section, fifty-five hundred is dropping out of the equipment maintenance line. Patrice had mentioned in her, her talk that we're centrally locating some of the machinery. So there is a machine that's associated with the folding and stuffing of the payroll checks and payroll advices and with the accounts payable, so that's moving over to the treasurer's office because they're, they're the ones using it now, as we have a centrally located mailroom. The other smaller reductions, the forms, are associated with payroll W twos. So since those are going into the payroll unit, the expense associated with that will go as well. The dues and subscriptions also, um, have some payroll piece to that, and that's moved over to the payroll unit. So overall, we are a very busy department. We continue to be very busy as other departments, uh, ramp up their, their efforts and their, their workflow. It always filters into our office as well. Do you have questions for auditing?
Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Ms. President. Thanks, Mr. Donald. Um, can you just explain to me the move from Wendy? Is that, is she still in the same division?
She is, but the proposal, and this is a policy decision that I'm, I have made and am proposing to the council. The proposal is to separate out payroll from auditing, make it its own little separate unit to be overseen by the treasurer and not auditor, and add a person to that payroll unit. So I'll have two dedicated people doing payroll. And the explanation is this: Payroll is an incredibly tedious, time-consuming process, not just in Chelsea, but in every city and town. And I'm not saying Chelsea is unique in having payroll in auditing, but in most cities and towns, payroll is not in auditing. The town, the city I came from, Revia, payroll was in the treasury, and that's where it is in the majority of cities. And part of the problem with having it in auditing is it is tedious, time-consuming, and given that Ed is specifically required to oversee it in the current structure, it sucks up a lot of my auditor's time that really is better spent on doing auditing and financial transactions and not the tedious payroll stuff. And believe me, when you have a payroll like Chelsea does, where just a fire department, for example, someone's getting E M T money, they're getting out-of-grade money, every week is all sorts of different transactions, and, you know, to be precise that that paycheck is accurate, it's so time-consuming that it's sucking up way too much of auditor's attention. And so try, my determination is, I can solve some, some, uh, sort of the time issues in auditing by taking that task out of auditing, leave to Ed the more, much more important financial transaction pieces he has. Not that payroll isn't important, it's critical to our employees, but tediously ensuring that someone's paycheck is accurate to the penny is not where I want Ed's time spent. And so I'm going to take that out. I'm going to, Wendy, who is a, who I feel is, is at this point competent enough to run a payroll unit, is going to move out. She will have, she will hire an independent person for her as a clerk, and those two people will be responsible for payroll each and every week. And it will relieve Ed's office of a big headache and a lot of, a lot of responsibility. His office will still be incredibly busy, and he'll only have four employees as opposed to five, but I think taking that out and with his four, with four employees in there, he'll be able to more effectively do the much more important financial transaction work that I think his, we need his office to be focusing on. So that's the rationale for the policy decision to separate out payroll, make it kind of an independent unit within treasury, which is where in the majority of the cities, not everyone, but the majority, it tends to lie.
So, I mean, that stuck out when I was reading through this, and still trying to get the answer to this question. Who does she re, sorry. Who will Wendy report to?
The treasurer, Patrice Montefusco.
There'll be some transition, and she'll, uh, Patrice will take over responsibility and will, uh, I, I've overseen payroll for more than fifteen years.
Okay.
So, so there's a lot. There's a lot there. I've been saying for, for several years now that...
Yeah.
It continues to increase on the amount of time that we have to spend to supervise that type of responsibility.
So you're pulling that big piece out, putting it into, um, treasurer's division, correct?
Yes.
Wendy's now going to get an assistant, correct? Which is to be hired later on?
Correct. So this process will take some months. I, my goal would be to have this done in the, at some point during the course of the fall.
Okay, I'm following it. I'm just trying to figure out the, so, so after this happens, Wendy in this potential hire, this hire, will be reporting to Patricia?
Correct.
Correct, right?
Yes.
And you, so you'll take the payroll responsibility totally out of the audit?
Well, there'll still be some oversight, as I would oversee every other financial transaction that the city performs, but it won't be the tedious, painstaking, daily, weekly review...
Okay.
That we're currently engaged in.
So Wendy currently, I know who she is. She's very good at a job. I've talked to her very, uh, many times.
So her, her job actually is payroll, accounts payable supervisor.
Right.
And the other person in my office, Donna Rowe, was also, um, a split position, A P payroll specialist.
So that's my, that's my question, Ed. So what will be her position now?
So now it's going to be accounts payable. For, for Donna, will be accounts payable plus some financial transactions that will add to the job. We need to talk to the union about this as well, but in Wendy's situation, the A P piece of her job duties will be removed, and she'll focus one hundred percent of her time on payroll. The, the payroll operation has, has grown extensively, and I had spoken to Tom about adding, adding assistance in my office or separating it out into a different division of its own, adding more people to it. Yeah, and there's even further to, to try to combine the school department and the city payrolls together, but that's ways away if we can ever do that. But, uh, the idea behind it is to try to have it a specialized department to focus exclusively on payroll data and payroll input. Now, some of, some of what you might have heard about already is the decentralization component of payroll, and we're talking about moving, moving payrolls out of a centralized office and having the individual departments enter the payroll into the Munis data, uh, software data. And the payroll office will then oversee that entry and make any changes that are necessary. So rather than having what currently happens now, is someone fills out a timesheet, sends it to my office in, in auditing, and now we have to enter all of that data manually, it doesn't make sense to do that. So, so the positive part about decentralization is it, it allows the departments to enter their own data where we now supervise and oversee the entry. The second thing further away...
Can I just hold you there before that, uh?
Yes.
I'm surprised because we actually, a year ago, we talked about, um, the computers and centralization. Why wouldn't an employee be able to put their own information in, and someone such as Wendy just review it and check it and say, okay, approve, and send it to...
Uh, we can do that through, through the current structure that we're aiming towards. The department head or the payroll person within the department has that, will have that capability of entering the, the amount of hours and other pays. We would not want to have the employee, the actual employee, doing that because that, that would, in my view, create too much, too much time that is open-ended.
Well, all the state workers do it, because you just, the only thing is you have to have just a password.
We're not, we may be able to...
You don't have access to anyone else's information, only your information.
We may, that's not in the plan for the current structure. We may be able to adapt to that later on, but what we're trying to do is to have a payroll person and a backup in each office. Each department be able to enter the payroll data, and then my group or Wendy now... and then my group or Wendy now in the new division will be responsible for overseeing and editing that and then applying the payroll.
Okay. For time's sake, I'll, I'll yield the rest of my time, but I thought that's where we were going when we talked about that in the past.
We are eventually going to a de, but not for individual employees. It will be department heads who'll be responsible for a time entry.
Thank you.
But employees eventually will have the capability of signing in
Yeah.
To a central location, rather than getting a pay stub, you'll be able to just sign in and see what your pay is.
That's right, yeah.
You can get your W2 information, you can check all, so, so that's part of the program, but not initially. Initially is to just decentralize out of, out of the payroll office.
I'm only playing devil's advocate, because we, we spoke about this in the past.
Understood.
I'm sorry.
And that's, that's a system that I was familiar with, and that was 2012, where we transitioned at MassDOT to be individuals signing in and verification online and then
I did it at the state, too. That's a great system. That's what I want to get to eventually.
So, and, and so leads me to the next question. Who is checking in? I see here that we're talking about maintaining hybrid remote workflow operations. Can you explain about what that means when you're maintaining hybrid remote workflow operations?
Okay, so, so let me start with how our operation adapted when COVID first hit. We had to go from a, an operation that was paper-based, that was almost exclusively paper-based, to an electronic system in 48 hours. And we did that with laptops that each of our employees had to receive and to come up with a plan that we would be able to apply all of the information that every department has in an electronic manner to receive the pay data that we needed. So we had to do that in a couple of ways. The first way was that everybody whose departments had no change at all, which would be small departments, the city, city council's office where there's virtually no change from week to week, other departments that are small and have no changes from week to week, we allowed them to just not submit anything at all and just tell us if there were any changes. And I took responsibility for that as the auditor. The larger departments, the police department, the fire department, DPW, E911, HHS, with those variations in pays, as the city manager had said, we have, over time, we have, we have stipends payments, we have shift differential payments, we have court payments, that there were multiple payments every week from those larger departments. We had those departments submit to us a worksheet that outlined all of those individual pays by person and by dollar amount, and those pieces of information is what our payroll people entered. So we went from, from paper-based to electronic almost exclusively. Everyone got paid on a scheduled basis. It was extremely difficult. There were lots of hours that were put in by all of my staff. I'm proud of all of them for the work that they did and continue to do. We're coming back to full operations in June when that goal was written. That goal was to continue some sort of hybrid model, which would be necessary without any idea of when COVID would end and when we would return to full operations. So the idea behind a hybrid model was we'll adapt in some way. So, so what we ran into in the auditing office is because of the size limitations in our offices, the public health nurse told us that all of our crew could not work together in the same offices, and we had a maximum of three out of the five that could work every day in our office. So we had a rotating schedule where people would come in on some days and not come in on others, and we would rotate through so that we'd be able to, so those who were home would be on the laptop, those that were in the office were on the desktops. And so that's a hybrid model that we had referred to, and we thought that that would continue into fiscal '22. It does not look like that will be the case any longer. We'll continue to keep the laptops because it is, it is a benefit to be able to enter into our system from a remote location from home, check emails or do something you didn't get to do during the day, but the idea is to have the 35 hours per week here in the building rather than
Yeah, when we were preparing this budget in March, we were thinking that maybe we would back, we would be back full to City Hall after Labor Day, that obviously with the vaccination being relatively successful as it has been in the state, we're back a lot sooner than I think we were anticipating a few months ago. There will still be, I mean, and we're dealing with this on a case-by-case basis, there are gonna still be probably through the summer, some unique employee circumstances where some people for a little bit of time during the week may still be home. We do have some employees that still have some childcare issues that switching this abruptly is, is creating a little bit of a problem, so we're trying to be sensitive to those issues. But I do expect the overwhelming majority of our workforce to be back here on June 1st, and probably everyone 100% back after Labor Day.
I have a, as a follow-up, just a, if it's the managers who are punching in the hours, so to speak.
Not the managers, they're approving it.
They're approving.
The line, there's a payroll person in each office that's responsible for the data entry, and there's a workflow as part of that program that it bumps up electronically to the department manager who then indicates an approval of that, and then it would flow into the payroll office after that. So the manager, it's not designed that the manager does the data entry. The payroll person in each office would do that.
How do you monitor the accountability of when employees are checking in, when they're checking out, to make sure that they're actually working the hours?
Department heads' responsibilities. So when we received timesheets from departments in the past where we in auditing have no way of knowing who's in and who isn't in all of our individual units, that's up to the department head or the manager to be able to attest to that. If someone is not in and they've exhausted all of their paid benefits, then they go into an unpaid status. And then the department heads would notify payroll to place someone on an unpaid status, and HR confirms that before we take that action. But that is a part of our practice, that we receive communications from department heads to tell us not to pay someone who has exhausted their paid benefits.
So the department head is the one who is responsible to make sure that the employees are checking in and checking out the times that they're supposed to be?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there some sort of system that they have in place themselves, or is it, again, talking about what we did with the state, I mean, it was easy to figure, figure out because yours workstation was your check-in point, you logged on, you knew exactly when you stepped in, and then you had to log off. So is there an actual logging on, logging off going on in particular when we were going in through remote?
I don't know. I know from my standpoint, my personal standpoint in, in the payroll auditing office, I can measure whether someone's workflow is progressing or not just by looking at certain measurement points that we have. So if, if the payroll operation isn't complete at the end of the week, then we know that something didn't happen. If the accounts payable doesn't have the volume that it usually does, we know something didn't happen. If departments are complaining to me that, that different types of financial transactions haven't been posted on a regular basis, I'd know that something was up. So I have a way of measuring whether the workflow is getting done, aside from the fact that the person's sitting right next to me if I'm here in the building, but if I'm remote, as we were for, for the year that we were out remote, I could measure easily what people were doing and what, what needed to get done.
Yeah, we don't have any requirement that, there's nothing in any of the collective bargaining agreements that requires people to log in at the start of the day and log out at the end of the day to confirm their presence. That's never existed here. To implement something like that would require, would be a mandatory subject of collective bargaining.
Have you worked, did, did the city Revere have anything like that?
Never.
Where'd you work, the state, did it have anything like that?
Not at the SJC.
Okay.
I will say, my department staff are very diligent, and there was never any issue of them not doing what they needed to do.
I just got one question. I understand all that, and we're not, and I don't think our intent is to see who's working and who's not working, but our intent is to see the accountability. So if someone is working three days from home and two, two days in the office, is there a code to state that this person worked three days in the office and a different code to say this person worked three days outside of the office?
No, but the department head, so me in particular, I'm responsible for knowing what the people who are remote are doing, and I'm checking in with them on a
It's not so much what they're doing, if, if there's work, but someone sees you outside and says, geez, I see you outside every day, and you, you're working. So your indication or your timesheet would indicate in the field or wherever or whatever the code is to say, you can see me at seven to three o'clock because I'm working out. You may not see me on Monday and Friday because I'm in the office, and that code to indicate that.
We don't have any different codes for that. We just, department heads just keep track of people's time, so if they're working from home, they note that that, that's a work day for them. And it really is up to the department head, while we're in this sort of hybrid situation, to ensure that people that were working from home were actually working.
That's a lot of, okay, that's a lot of trust without
Was a lot of trust for the last year, there's no question about that. We operated this
And did you find any abuse at, at all? Do you have any cases of abuse?
I, not in my office. I mean, I'm not gonna say that there wasn't, but it was a unique situation.
As, as someone is only playing the devil's advocate, and hopefully we'll go learn from this, is that what folks are saying? And that's like, wow, there's no accountability, so you know what? Yeah, I'm working from home.
But I challenge that. I don't say that there's no accountability. I'm the department head, and I am accountable for my group, and I know what they're doing, and I'm satisfied with what they're doing. So I don't take the position that there's no accountability.
So I understand what you're saying, but what record are you telling me that on last week, those folks you're accountable for, that you said they were all working out? How, how do you know?
We're, we're communicating by email constantly, the five of us, when there's people working from home.
But that's what Roy was saying, if we have access to a computer, you can just put your time in, you don't have to say, I'm on my lunch break. You put it in in the morning, or you put, we don't, we do it once a week. Because now you put your name behind us. If someone sees you at, you know, Curly's, and you're supposed to be in the office, it's wait a minute, you was at Curly's for four hours, and you're at the local pool hall.
So we have never required employees to do that.
Okay, I'm just saying.
I'm not suggesting that you couldn't. All I'm saying is that if you wanted to implement such a system, that is a mandatory subject of collective bargaining.
Wow, is it?
I'm sure we could, you know, we could, using IT, figure out when they were on their laptop, but they, that doesn't necessarily mean they weren't doing any work just because their laptop wasn't operating.
Again, I, I have to say, in the auditing department, we all had laptops who were all remote, the work got done every single day, every single week. Everyone got paychecks, everyone got, got
Right.
Pay advices. The bills got paid for the city on a regular basis. More than 35 hours were put in per week by all of my group, and we did exceptionally well.
Right, but that's your group, that's what I'm saying. You know that.
Yes.
You're aware of that.
Yes.
But we got other departments.
But you have to, you have to trust that each department head is doing what Ed is doing and what I am doing.
But we do, but also even folks, what they do, they still have some, because once you put your name in there, or say you work from seven to three, five days a week, if someone say, well, I saw this person in New York two days out of that week, their name's on it, it's not Ed's name. They sign off that they work those days.
So we don't have such a system in place.
Okay, thanks, I don't want to linger.
I will also say that, you know, this was a unique 15 months. We are not gonna be in a position going forward where many people are working from home. The norm is you work in City Hall, you don't work from home. Telecommuting is typically in this, in this workforce, a rarity. We have a policy for it, and we've always had a policy for it, but it tends to be for unique circumstances for short periods of time. And come June 1, that will be the new, the, the, the policy will revert to that where tele, working from home some portion of the week will be relatively rare here.
So Mr. Manager, that's not why this conversation started. The conversation started about the employees and going from one department. So if you had this capability, then the employees, it would be less work on the person that's moving from the auditor's division to the treasurer's division.
Yes.
So that's how it started. It wasn't to figure out who's working and who's not working. It was started to trying to figure out how or why aren't we doing something to make it easier on these departments?
And I think
Where we don't have to create other jobs.
This decentralization of data input like that is a place where we're trying to go. We're just not there.
That's where we're starting. It doesn't mean that, so, so I agree with you, Counselor, that that's a great idea, and Tom had mentioned that it happened in his workplace, and I think Roy the same.
Yeah.
So, so we, we will get there, it's just not something that will happen in fiscal '22. We just need to decentralize in '22 and have departments, individual payroll staff in every department have the training that they need to enter the data so that the auditing group goes into an oversight mode rather than a data entry mode. Okay, thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Counselor Cooper.
Over here, your budget lowered from last year, right? From F21 to '22, it's less, right?
Yes.
That's because you lost one employee?
That's because one employee is moving, yes, to the payroll division. It's, it's, it's coming out of my department, and the proposal is it goes into this payroll unit, yes.
Okay, so that's why, but over here, right, the professional service, those are those people that audit you every year?
Yeah, well, there's a few things, yes. We have the, the independent audit firm that comes in and provides the audit once a year. We have the OPEB consultant that does the analysis, the actuarial report every two years, so this year is another of those two years, every other year that they do. We have consulting that is done, we have reporting that's done for, for us, for the DOR required reports that are done on an annual basis, so that piece, that, that $80,000 consists of, of multiple things.
And I don't understand, what's forms? Those are the paper, paper forms?
There's two things. The W2s are a specialty form, so we don't get those through our supply line. So the W2 form that's pre-printed, and you'd put it in, in a department printer, and the cells would get filled by data that comes out of our program. So that's a specialty form that is ordered for that, and 1099 forms as well. So the, the 1475 coming out of that line is the W2 forms that you'll see in the next conversation we'll have about the payroll unit, you'll see the forms coming into that department at 170, I'm sorry, at 1475. The 170 is the value of the, of the 1099 forms that will stay in auditing because we're still responsible for accounts payable.
So overall, your budget decreased?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Robinson.
Ed, in regard to the professional services, that's $78,350. Was that for the auditing firm?
Yeah, there's a few things. It's the auditing firm that does its annual audit for us. I think you all see that, that you pay the bill up here in, in city council, but we have that, that workflow that comes through us. We have a, a OPEB actuarial consultant that does our OPEB reporting every other year, so there's a cost associated with that, $10,000. There's another piece of this that relates to required reporting. We have fixed assets that we report on, on an annual basis, balance sheet reports that go into the DOR, Schedule A reporting. All of those are hugely time-consuming efforts, and it is in our best interest to have a consultant do that rather than us doing it. As Tom had mentioned, we were very busy in our office, we continue to be, and we, we continue to value the work that the consultants do for us to get the workflow moving quickly.
All right, that was my call.
We're also paying part of, out of this line, part of the decentralization cost for that consultant that's doing that for us.
Right.
So there's a smaller piece that comes out of my budget and a larger piece that's coming out of the school department budget.
All right, because I, I know in a city council budget for professional services, we had $59,489,000.
That's, that's for your, that's for the audit, yes.
That's for the audit, okay.
So if there's, if there's anything, I think that the cost is stable for three years
Yeah.
Lower number. And we are probably coming up to your third year now. I think fiscal '22 would be the third year.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
If Al is here, we can go to the school.
Right, we're going to the school department now. Gentlemen, we're gonna be moving on to the school department.
Okay, thank you, Counselors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the questions.
Going to the schools. Going to the schools.
Hi, how are you? Yeah, I did a special for you and made everyone from freeze.
Just be sure the microphone is closer. Thank you. Kinda hard to hear. Good evening, Superintendent.
Would you like us to start?
Feel free to jump in. Let me know. We have two, um, two items that were sent to us. We have the packet, the FY twenty-two budget that I can open up. Yep, the PowerPoint is right here. Share screen.
Do we have a clicker?
Here we go.
Yeah.
We have that. Just let me know as you wanna click along. That PowerPoint right up there on the screen.
Thank you. Yeah. It looks.
It's behind you. If that's the one you want to show, yep.
Correct.
Oh, okay. That one? Mm-hmm. What do you want me to do? Okay. Yep. Mm-hmm. No. I'll see if they'll let me because this is a, uh...
Okay. All right, well, good evening, City Council. It's always great to be here. So we will, even though the presentation seems long, we will go through it as quickly as possible. We know you have a full night. But we, okay, thank, okay, so we'll go ahead and get started. Our, our, our budget this year, we've titled it reopen, restore, rebuild. Um, part of the emphasis is really reopening our schools, which we've done. And now we're, we're gonna be working on restoring because we know a lot of our students have suffered during this pandemic. And so a lot of the funding is, is going to restoring a lot of mental health issues and really meeting the needs of our students who have suffered and then rebuilding. Because we are receiving Student Opportunity Act funds and SR two dollars, our focus will then be to rebuild. And so our topics for this evening are funding for public education in Massachusetts, CPS revenue and expenditures, and then revenue forecasts, expenditure forecasts, proposed budget plan, and next, our next steps. Our vision in Chelsea Public Schools is we are a gateway school system that welcomes and educates all students. And our theory of action has shifted this year because I'll be rolling out a five-year strategic plan. And so our theory of action is based on this five-year strategic plan. So if we improve the quality of teaching and learning at every school, provide innovative and enriching program for all, recruit, support, and retain diverse teachers and leaders, engage families as our partners in our core work, and ensure efficient and effective operational systems, then we will deliver the high-quality education to all students that our Chelsea students deserve and will improve outcomes and access across the system for all students. And every student will graduate from high school on a path to college and career success. So this theory of action and these five bullets here are actually gonna be core to our five-year strategic plan and you'll see these over and over again for five years. Our strategy, again, is Bridge to Success two point oh. We've been functioning under Bridge to Success and now what we've done with, we're gonna be doing with our new strategic plan is adding the two-point-oh piece. And our goal is to ensure that our students graduate digitally literate, college and career ready, and biliterate. And so all of the, what you'll see here is how our budget aligns to these core goals. Our budget development process was very engaging. Even though we were in the middle of a pandemic, we still managed to have many voices at the table and we received many compliments from our constituents and our stakeholders that this was one of the more engaging budget processes that we have done. And so we had three community conversations in February, approximately twenty participants at one, a K through eight session, we had seventy-five participants, and then a nine through twelve session, we had fifty-three. And then schools and departments presented their thoughts and ideas on the budget. And then we also have our Student Opportunity Act funding now blended with our regular Chapter Seventy. So what you'll see is our budget, our SOA, is combined into that Chapter Seventy. And so now I will turn it on to Monica Lamboy, who will go into more of the details with the numbers.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to spend a few minutes just going over how public funding is available for education in Massachusetts. It's a unique system. The first thing that the state does is it calculates the foundation budget, which is the cost for all children in Chelsea regardless of where they're going to school. What does it cost to educate them? They then determine, looking at local revenues, what amount the local jurisdiction can contribute toward the total cost for all students. The difference is what the state contributes and they call it Chapter Seventy funding. So that, at that point, is everything for all kids in Chelsea. From this total pool, the monies that are allocated to charter schools, because some of our, our children do choose to go to charter schools, those monies are taken out from the large number of Chapter Seventy. Um, and so the Chelsea Public Schools works with the residual that's left. An additional figure that's critically important is what's called net school spending. And each year, it's not enough to budget the, the monies. We actually have to show that we spend the state's minimum amount that's allocated toward, toward children. The next slide is just sort of a graphic visual of this in process, where the circle is the total cost for all students in Chelsea. Then we have the foundation budget, so the state share in blue on the screen, where the city share is now in white. So we see that the state does contribute a sizable percentage of the, of the budget. Then within the local share, there is the amount that's required to, oh, and from that, the charter is taken out in red. So we, that wedge of the pie is taken and allocated to the charter schools directly. Then within the local section is the amount that's required to get us to net school spending. Then there are items that the city funds that are not eligible for net school spending, such as the yellow buses, the intergenerational literacy program. But as a community, Chelsea values those items. And then there's an amount that, that you as the city council allocate on top of that. So it's just a visual representation of the process for funding. Moving on, we not only use Chapter Seventy funding and the local funding that, that you allocate, we also actively pursue grants every year, competitive grants, and then we also have entitlement grants based on our population. We also have revolving funds, which are monies that we generate. Our lunch program is the by-far largest one of those. Uh, moving a little more closer to home, looking at the current year that we're in, fiscal twenty-twenty-one, that pie shows just how the resources are allocated or how they came in for the current year. The largest section is the Chapter Seventy funding, but the city portion is, is substantial. Um, and then grants and revolving funds. And we put a note here to indicate that our share of grants grew in one year from eight and a half percent of the budget to twelve and a half percent of the budget, which is testimony to the monies that the state and federal government has given us to try to get through this really unique year. How we've allocated that in the, in the current year is on the next table. We're a people-heavy business. Education involves a lot of human beings working with the kids. So our labor and our health insurance is by far the largest expenditure category every year. Uh, but we also pay special education tuition, transportation, et cetera, as you can see on that table. The next pie is really a representation, a visual representation of those budget categories. Again, in red where the people part of the business is such a large section. IT, supplies, facilities follow. Uh, next one is to spend a second talking about enrollment trends. Our monies are allocated by numbers of students that are in attendance. So we closely track enrollment trends year over year. Uh, what this graphic shows is that back in between two thousand and three and two thousand and thirteen, there was a dramatic increase in student population. I know many of you were here during that time, just year over year was just this dramatic growth. Uh, we sort of leveled out after that time period with a small decline one year. Um, but then this October, the enrollment numbers declined significantly. This happened across the country where younger-aged children, the families were not enrolling them during the pandemic in a remote learning environment. And it, we're believing it's a one-year blip. We have a great school district. We know that people are moving into Chelsea and are staying. But we have to contend with how to, what is the revenue picture? What does enrollment picture look like going forward? So on the next table, this is just a numeric, what the past few years have been. On October first is the date that we do, we do calculate the enrollment. Um, and for the year coming up, we are projecting over six thousand two hundred students, which is on par. So the one-year blip, we do expect to be overcome by next year. Moving forward to the revenue forecast for the current year. So this is a few tables in one, a little slow. So the first part of this table shows exactly what I said earlier, the Chapter Seventy versus the city of Chelsea allocation. Um, these are the governor's budget numbers. That's what we are required by the charter to balance to. We do know that new numbers will come out ultimately. And so we'll come back to you at some point in the future with revisions, but this is the governor's numbers. What's important here is that Chapter Seventy went up by eight and a half million dollars in one year. This is the commitment to the Student Opportunity Act that the legislature and the governor has shown. Um, and at the same time, they lowered the city's requirement by eight hundred ninety thousand, which I know in a tough year is hopefully a relief to yourselves. The next section shows how the charter school revenue and the charter school tuition come into play, where we do get a relatively modest amount of revenue, three point three million toward charter schools, but the tuition many times dwarfs the amount of that revenue. And then finally, um, is the amount of funding that we are anticipating for the Chelsea Public Schools. If you approve this, we are projecting an increase of about seven point one million in the budget before you to, to determine.
So as we look to reopen, restore, and rebuild, our budget priorities are, are truly to strengthen and expand for equity. And so you'll see in the next part of our budget all where we're adding and restoring. And it's no secret, we need to work on special education. We need to work on our ELL supports, our curriculum development, our social emotional supports, and family and community engagement. Those are key tenants that you'll see where we've specifically added to these areas. And then we've restored and we're adding some general education positions. We are looking to accelerate learning. We know that over this pandemic, some students actually thrived in remote learning and others did not. So we need to work with those students who didn't thrive and we have to accelerate their learning. So we're looking to accelerate literacy and math learning. And then we are also looking to reduce student-to-teacher ratio. And when we talk about student-to-teacher ratio in Chelsea Public Schools, obviously we're limited by space. So the way we reduce student-to-teacher ratio and have smaller class sizes is we have more adults in a classroom. It may not look like we're eliminating class size, though, because we just are limited. We're so limited by our space. And so that's something that we have to think about long-term if we continue to get students. But we did have, uh, we are projected to have not a client increase in students, but going back to normal next year. So we, we'll go ahead and continue with that. Another, other priorities are to expand the Caminos program. We expanded it in a pandemic to middle grades. We're gonna continue to expand and strengthen Caminos. Um, we're looking for a lease right now. We need to expand Chelsea Opportunity Academy. They are currently living at Chelsea High School. And we've been looking for a place or a home for Chelsea Opportunity Academy. And then strengthen overall district operations. Um, we're preparing for the relocation of COA and ILP. And one goal of ours and that we've heard over and over is we need to retain teachers and recruit and retain teachers. So that's another area that we're building pipelines, looking at ways that we can better retain our teachers so they don't leave us because we know that turnover is expensive. And so here, I'll have Monica go through the proposed budget plan.
So the first thing we do every year is we look at the cost of the existing operation. Every year, the cost goes up, bargaining agreements, step increases, et cetera. So the first table shows, you know, just to stay where we are, we have, we are projecting about a three point five, three point three-five million dollar increase. But with the numbers that I showed before, that gives us still a lot of opportunity to be creative. So moving into the plans for the different schools and different departments. Um, at the Early Learning Center, these are youngest children. Um, we really wanna strengthen student and family support, accelerate reading, just as the superintendent had said, and focus even in these early grades on science and technology. Um, we're hoping from a general fund standpoint that a teacher, coach for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and a parent liaison, which would bring that school to having two parent liaisons what it has one now, to really be able to give a lot of outreach to our families. At the Berkowitz Elementary, um, similar themes, student and family support, English language learning, special education, accelerated reading. Um, an English language learning teacher, an ETL, education team leader, works with our special ed students and will provide more one-to-one support for our families. Um, and a parent liaison that would increase the school currently has a half a person would have their own parent liaison at the Berkowitz. For the Hooks, the same group of positions, an L teacher, a special ed support teacher, and a half of a parent liaison to give that school additional support. At the Kelly, which is home to our Caminos program, we are proposing a, an L teacher, an additional Caminos coach who will focus on, will be working out of the Kelly, but will also help the Brown Middle School, which is where our Caminos program is growing into. So it'll help with continuity in the curriculum and really making that a robust program. Educational team leader and a half a parent liaison. At the Sokolowski Elementary, an additional special education teacher, the same additional support for special ed processing, parent liaison, and the librarian for the whole school is technically housed at the Sokolowski and we're gonna bring that position to full-time once again. At the Brown Middle, um, heavy investment in our middle grades. We really feel it's an important place to invest. Four teachers for Caminos so that now that we have these students coming up, they all need history, science, English language arts, math. So we create a whole cadre of Caminos teachers at the Brown Middle School. Um, a coach for English language learning and additional substitute to provide stability if we have absences. At Clark Avenue Middle School, an L teacher, special ed teacher, student support specialist, who will help with students that are struggling to remain in the classroom. We'll have somebody dedicated to support them. Um, a coach for English language learning and a building substitute. At the Wright Academy, um, several coach positions. At the Wright Academy, several coach positions, a student support specialist, coach for L, and a building substitute. And then at Chelsea High School, we do know that, anticipating that our bridge program, which is our, our English language learning program at the high school, will be growing. Enrollment is already increasing. So two and a half teachers for that, a coach for special education inclusion, a special ed teacher. And then to grow our general ed courses and our teachers, a biology, health and math teacher, three total. And additional parent liaison at the high school. Chelsea Opportunity Academy, a teacher for science, technology and mathematics, a data analyst to both track how the students are doing in that unique format, but also help with administrative items. And then they're combining one teacher, two halves into a whole. In our special education program, we are proposing two board-certified behavioral analysts. These are professionals who work largely with our students with autism to put structured plans in place to help them grow and learn and enhance their responsiveness to behavioral clues. Two speech-language pathologists to help our kids now that we're back in person, really work on that area. And an extended learning site coordinator, which will help coordinate after-school and before-school programming district-wide. Those are all general fund positions. We wanted to, to be very clear that we have this new SR2 funding that is coming to the district. It's one-time only, funded by the federal government, but we wanted to also let you know how we intend to use that. It's to help us reopen, social emotional supports, parent and student engagement, and to address learning loss. Nine point two two-five million on the next slide, and I won't go into all the details. But what we'll see, we're working on a grant application right now. We're really putting the lion's share of the money directly into teachers, directly into paraprofessionals, really focused on reading and learning. Our first graders will have a paraprofessional for every first grade classroom. Some of those students may not have been in a classroom setting. If they didn't go to preschool and kindergarten was all remote, they may literally be coming to first grade with not a lot of experience sitting at a desk. So we're going to give additional support to our first grade teachers. Social workers, counselors, nurses and nurses aides, I know, I don't even need to explain why we're, we're adding those. We're also adding speech therapists and interpreter translators for special education, so that our parent liaisons are not pulled into interpreting for IEP meetings. They can really focus on the outreach. And then we'll have the interpreters available to support the families through the IEP process. So we hope you'll find that the budget proposal checks all the boxes that the superintendent said in terms of our priorities for the next year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I will start on the right-hand side. Any questions? Council Rodriguez, any questions? Council Brown?
So thank you for the overview very in depth. But I didn't get the number of how many preschool to twelve graders you had total numbers in the school district?
If you go back to our enrollment projections?
Yes. No, for the number of students from pre-K to twelve.
This year, this school year, which was measured last October when we were still on remote, we had six thousand and ninety-six students. That was a hundred and fifty lower than we had projected, but we are not unique in that. Where we are projecting going forward, we're projecting six thousand two hundred and eighty-eight students. So to return largely to normal.
How many, you said two thousand?
Six thousand two hundred and eighty-eight.
Okay. And what was the total cost per student? Initially, some numbers came up, but I missed them. I don't think you got them out. It spoke up earlier, Madam Superintendent.
So the current year that we're in, the state funding is equivalent to fourteen thousand five hundred per student. Moving into the new year, because again, the Student Opportunity Act funding is coming, nearly sixteen thousand.
So about fifteen hundred.
About a fifteen hundred one-year increase.
And Madam Superintendent, I was listening to you when you're talking about your theory of action. But I didn't hear you talk about any of your safety or healthy, safety or health programs in that five-year, and that's that five-year forecast. I guess you said you were looking forward to one of your goals. And if you could just tell me a little bit about the safety of the schools and the healthiness of the schools moving forward.
Sure. So the safety is embedded in our curriculum. As far as health, I, I want to clarify, you're looking at student safety or as far as?
Safety just being in school, going to school feeling like I can come here and learn without worrying about being attacked. You did talk about some of the challenges with some of the problems of student, and that's the health.
Sure. So what you'll see here as far as feeling safe, we're adding social workers, we're adding school counselors that will take care of our tier-one implementation of, of just really meeting the needs of our students at tier-one and tier-two. So when our students come to school, if they're not, if they're feeling bullied, if they're not feeling safe, they can go to a school counselor or a social worker. In terms of feeling safe, we are also working with our high school to add some other measures that are currently under negotiation, and that is also embedded. But I, I can't speak to that exactly, but we are, we're working through that, especially at the high school. As far as keeping, making sure that our schools are safe from COVID, we have COVID testing in our schools, we've contracted out cleaning, extra cleaning, extra custodians.
Do you have sanitation stations like where people go in?
Yeah, and Monica can speak more to that. We've also hired, like, just like here at City Hall, extra clean, people to clean. We're working on hiring nurses. And so there's the COVID safety and there's just the regular mental health safety that we've, we've, we have focused on.
My last question, what was it? It was resource and facilities. I know you talked about that you don't have a lot of space and stuff, but have you, again, looking at your theory of action, five years or two years, three years down the road, are you looking to work with the city, maybe off-site location facilities where, you know, you can do some studying and mentoring the Boys and Girls Club or different programs, buildings we have already existing?
So one of the core tenants of this strategic plan that I'll be rolling out is out-of-school time. And so that out-of-school time or extended learning is where we'll be partnering with our community to meet the needs of our students after school and before school. So that's kind of like the third, a third tier of?
So when you say community, give, give me an example.
It could be the Boys and Girls Club. It could be even using our buildings more after school and having an outside organization come to the school. So it's going to look, it's going to look different, but we're looking to provide more opportunities for our students to engage after school.
And did you come up with a survey to, to get these kind of ideas where folks would feel like, oh, after school, we can go play chess at the local synagogue or the local church? And we'll feel safe because the school have a partnership with them?
We are, one, one of the things that I heard in my entry planning, which was over a year ago, was that this was a gap and something that we needed to work on. And, and it's a core, it's my, it's my third tenant for this new strategic plan. We actually are working with our city manager here with the children's cabinet, and we have put together our partners. And one, Boston College has done a needs assessment, and this came out, and the needs assessment as well. And so we are putting together the, the partners and the community partners that are on the children's cabinet are, will choose to work in, if they choose to work in the extended learning time, we'll create a plan for the extended learning time that has many community voices and partnerships in this extended learning.
Last question, Mr. President. So you, you bring in some folks and they look at the kids and they see something's wrong. Do they talk to the school superintendent or do they go outside and they say, look, we need to bring a specialist in because we feel this person has some physical or mental issues? And how do you deal with that?
Normally, that happens at the school level.
But you are at the school level, right?
Yeah, I mean, when I'm, I'm talking about the individual, like, let's say, for instance, at the Kelly School. And so if I, if there's a student there, a teacher identifies a student that has an issue, a, a need, and then?
And maybe being neglect, neglect at home, and the parents, they may not even consider the thought. But the school, your personnel, I'm sorry to cut you off.
Yeah, no, that's fine, too.
But someone sees it.
Yeah, someone sees it. Our educators are trained to address it. So whether it's a teacher, a social worker, it could be an art teacher, it could be a music teacher, it could be the regular teacher. But if, if there's someone that the student's connecting with, oftentimes the students will go to the educator and say, I'm, I'm experiencing this, or someone they trust. Then those teach, the teacher or the educator could go directly to a social worker or a school counselor or the principal and, and say, you know, this ex-student raised this issue. We need to address it. And then we right away provide the services to that student and connect the student to the services.
Okay, because the reason why I said that, it didn't happen here, but I had a friend where a student trusted a person in the school. They went and told this person, and this person went and told someone else and someone else, and that person was in trouble when she went home. So, you know, I just didn't know what kind of confidentiality or what programs, if indeed we have programs. Because moving forward on this post-pandemic, I know there's going to be some lot of doubts and folks are going to be a little fearful and, you know, timid coming back and just want to help them.
Yeah, if, if kids do go to our educators, our social workers, our school guidance counselors, those conversations are confidential and should remain confidential.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
In relation to the, the spending of the nine, I think it's nine point two million dollars? And, and it is the deadline you stated, right there is a deadline. Is any of that, any of the ideas being pitched about modernizing, say, the, the infrastructure of the school themselves, whether it be the HVAC systems to more custodians and such? I didn't see that in the, in there, but I thought that I had talked to a local plumber and he tells me he's very busy right now. He's very busy because he's getting hired by the universities and colleges because they're changing all their water fountains and all that stuff. So I'm curious to know if any of the, if this is on the table, because I didn't see it in the, the list. So is that on the table?
Well, I'm really proud to say that we have installed in every classroom and office air cleaning equipment. These are office-sized or classroom-sized equipment that has three levels of protection. We have also switched out all of our drinking fountains already using grant funds that we've secured this year so that they all have bottle fillers. All of our actual, you know, classic drinking fountain is closed now. It'll open up eventually, but we even bought bottles for all of the students. In terms of our HVAC system, we had a very thorough study done by an outside team that not only looked at the design, but brought in a consultant that ran the system. We just recently replaced the Williams entire rooftop HVAC system, which was scheduled before the pandemic hit, just happened to be very timely. For our other schools, your capital plan, which you just considered, had monies for the Early Learning Center. It's about half of what we estimate to be the full cost. Our design is underway right now. We are working on a design for the Mary C Burke system as well. Really because of the age of the buildings, we're at twenty-five years. And I know I came before to say, you know, a lot of our systems are aging all at the same time. So it just happened to be timely with the COVID. These are projects that we would be working on the design right now. We're just really trying to fast-forward them so that when grant funds are available, we can say, hey, we have a shovel-ready project here. So we will have extensive design work done.
And what about the, the side of the, the maintenance and cleaning, our, our custodians? Is there an increase in staff to make sure that everything's getting wiped down the same amount of time that we did before? Because it's probably, you know, more work than it was. Is that in the process? Are there, are the, are we forever going to see, you know, the dispenser of sanitizer at our doors? Just like unfortunately, we see in some buildings metal detectors? But is that now the, you know, the future where we're always going to see sanitizing agents at all entrances and so forth? And does that, is that being supported by additional staff?
We have an amazing custodial team that was out full-time, all the time, did not stop work. We bought many thousands of dollars' worth of PPE that has been provided to every classroom, masks, paper towels, wipes. We've put sanitizer all, all over the walls. We, we have purchased water washing stations for, in order to, because there's limitations on how many students can go in the bathroom. So there are water stations in almost every hallway right now. In addition, we've hired temp cleaners for, from now to the end of this school year, who are going around washing all high-touch surfaces, doorknobs, pushbars, stairwells. They're washing the floor. They're wonderful. I think we need to kind of regroup, see what the CDC and what the state require of us for next year. We, we are proposing some monies in the grant funds to continue the temp services, but we'll see if that's a, if that's a requirement. But it's worked very well, very, really pleased with the work that they're doing.
And also, I know that a lot of the complaints or rather, it's not a complaint, but just a reality and a concern that during this year away from school, where internet and a good laptop was important to try to keep our kids educated. You did a wonderful job with the dispersment of the laptops to families. Is any of the funding, again, per the list, I didn't see it, so I'm asking, what, what is, if any, funding is going to be used to close that digital divide that we kept on hearing about in our community that would be permanent? And now, because we can't go into the home so much, but what are we doing at least when they step into the classroom, they step into the buildings, they're not in any lesser position than, say, any other community around us?
You know, I, I appreciate that question because that is something that is heavily on my mind as well. So we went immediately one-to-one, and that was great. So what we learned is that many of our students did not have internet service. It was the first time that they had hotspots in their, in their, where they live, and they could actually access the internet. So one thing we're trying to do is we realized that the Chromebooks kind of took a beating as well physically. So we're restoring Chromebooks, and we'd like to be able to say that students will have a Chromebook to work and do homework at home, because that really is about equity. It's about closing, closing the opportunity gaps for our students. And so recognizing that we are still continuing to invest in our technology for students so that they can continue to have Chromebooks that go home, they continue to have internet. We're, we're still, we're still working and collaborating with our city on some, some creative solutions. And so that's something that we're in conversation with and that we, we think about a lot.
Tom, years ago, your predecessor, we had this discussion, and you see it in some downtown business districts. And that is that they find a way to do a funding for free Wi-Fi in downtown districts. I'm just saying, at what point do we not think that maybe using our schools with a wide enough branch beyond the, you know, as, as hotspots, so to speak? Don't we think about, or is it possible to even think that we could have free Wi-Fi across the community if we're wrapping our, you know, our poles with, you know, with cameras and all over the spots? At one point, don't we think that, given that we can't depend on the free market? Because I, I see our neighbor Take the Task Comcast, and we know that our speeds here are terrible. They were the lowest in the area. At what point do we say we can't wait for the private sector to, to treat our community and our kids as the same that they treat where they can charge a little bit more? And just say, we have to make up the difference ourselves and not put in money into it, whether it be I C I P or through this funding, and offer that sort of service?
So we have been spending an awful lot of time on this issue over the course of the last year, this digital equity issue and this idea of some sort of public Wi-Fi system. It's very technologically challenging, but we are exploring some avenues that we think could be very fruitful, and these discussions are sort of? And these discussions are sort of right in the midst of what we're doing right now. So we may have more to disclose to the city council with some investment ideas for you. Obviously, one key bucket for spending upper funds is for broadband. And so we're just waiting to see if we can develop something that's feasible. And if it is, and I know our Ramon, and he's working with me in the school department on this issue, very diligently. And we hope that maybe in six months, we could have a proposal to the council for something, some investment that could do exactly what you're proposing to do. But it's a little early. We, I don't want to promise something because we're not quite sure technologically we can deliver. But Ramon has some ideas that may bear fruit, and I would say, sit tight. But the direct answer to your question is, we have been thinking about this an awful lot over the course of the last nine months.
Okay. Last question that I have. We talked about the opportunities for children to go beyond school, after-school programs, expansion with childcare. Is there a point where the school itself may consider, beyond what is limited by the capacity of, say, the Boys and Girls Club? Do we think that at some point, the city itself runs its own summer program, using our own facilities? In thinking that, you know, the use of the schools are a year-round sort of, you know, programming and not the off-time? As, you know, again, it's more to think that we have these buildings, there's a capacity issue at the Boys and Girls Club. I hear from parents all the time, there's only so many kids that can go in the program, there's too many no's. The idea of, again, you've heard it from this council many times about building another youth center and so forth. But at what point don't we think about using this funding possibly for some sort of continuation of expanding childcare, expanding after-school programming and during, and running through all the way through the summer? And I'll add on to one more thing. There is, we know, I don't know what the capacity issues with the school, but we do have a school right now that is closed, St. Rose. And one idea is wondering, at what point is that a possible site to, at some point, approach that entity and say that it's a central location, it's a building that's already a school? It could possibly give employees a city hall parking, so many other things that could happen. But is that a possibility? Are we at that capacity, or it's not even worth thinking at this point?
Well, I'll go first, and then you can, we can tag it to you. Again, we are offering, with a lot of the SR2 funds, we're offering a lot of acceleration for our students in the summertime. So we will have full buildings with various programs going on. We have our calculus project, we have our regular ESY, which is for special education. We have our regular acceleration learning for our students. We are targeting our early grades for literacy, so students who are falling behind, we want to catch them. At the high school, we're doing credit recovery, and summer school, we'll have summer school opportunities at the high school level as well. So our schools will be busy. As far as looking at how do we expand learning in our buildings after hours again in the summertime? I think that's something that we really need to think about. How are we meeting the needs of our families in the summer? I, as a parent, always struggled with childcare. Summer would roll around, and I'd say, "Oh, gosh, what am I going to do with my child? I'm working." And so that was always a challenge. It's something that we need to think about. Right now, the debate was, do we have summer school in-person or remote? And we've decided to do summer school in-person because we think it's important that we connect with our students, that we try to meet the needs of our students. And right now, as we have this window, we have four weeks left with our kids, identifying kids who could really benefit from summer school. As far as partnering with the city to do more, I, we are open to that. I know Bee has a wealth of programming right now with community schools. There's so many options that she has for summer program. There's a, I don't know if you've seen her website, there's a whole slew of opportunities for families to engage. But if we're looking at, like, meeting childcare needs and things like that, we definitely could, definitely can do a better job, and we need to work together.
Yeah, I would just add, we do partner with one out-of-school-time vendor, which is for kids only. And they operate a robust summer camp out of the elementary complex, five days a week for the whole summer. And so there are many Chelsea kids who do take advantage of that program. It has subsidized slots, and I know she has, has been expanding and looking to expand this summer. So there is, there is an option within the school for pretty robust summer programs. Now, that only encompasses grades one to four, K to four, I should say. So it is somewhat limited, but there are these opportunities that do exist.
I can ask, Monica, can you speak a little bit more about FKO expansion and our partnership?
This summer, traditionally, our summer school is eight fifteen till twelve thirty. But this summer, FKO is going to wrap around our program and offer seven thirty to five thirty. So they'll greet the kids, have breakfast, our instructors will come in, and then they will be able to do more fun programming for the afternoon until the families come and pick them up. So this is our first time doing that based on the funding to help close the gap.
Councilor Robinson?
Sounds good. And actually, before the pandemic, I had the opportunity to bring the Latinum Society into the school and work with the science teachers, and we worked with twenty-two classes and six hundred and twenty-two kids. And we got a lot out of it, and the kids got a lot out of it. And we're open and willing to come back at any point in time.
Councilor Cupro?
I see here you hired sixteen new teachers?
That's the proposal. The proposal is to hire sixteen. That's the, you haven't done it yet. That's the proposal.
You want to hire sixteen new teachers, right?
That's from grant money. That last slide is grant funds that are coming to us because of the pandemic. We're just explaining what we're proposing.
But the grant money, once you get the grant money, the city picks up the tab anyways. If they don't want the cities, once the grant, the city has to take it. So I'm not, I like the sixteen teachers, so that means you're going to turn around and make smaller classes?
Our biggest constraint, as the superintendent said earlier, is the number of classrooms that we have. What we do to make smaller class sizes is we provide more adults so the students can have small breakouts. They can work more one-to-one or two-to-one with the, with the teachers. So that's how those teachers are going to help us be able to have more smaller breakouts.
What is the total, what is your class size now? Because I'm hearing that your class size is thirty kids to a class, thirty-five. They're saying to each class that you have this. When the school opens up again, before the pandemic, there was, I was hearing there was thirty kids to a class. Is that true?
We may have a couple of classes that are at thirty. For example, Band is going to be at thirty, Kantari will be at thirty. So some of our high school classes will be a little larger because there may be elective classes. We average around about twenty-five. So it, it, but again, as Ms. Lamboy was saying, our class sizes, even though we may have, we have, twenty-five is, can be, seem large. But we do have a lot of push-in. And when I say push-in, we have a lot of adults coming into those classrooms, whether it's paraprofessional, whether it's a special education inclusion, whether it's an ESL teacher so that they can work in smaller groups.
Is there anything that you can make? Once you've got these sixteen additional teachers, could you use them to make smaller classes? Like twenty-five, I guess thirty, but it could be more, but I'm not going to say what it is or what it's not, right? But I'm saying, with additional teachers, maybe you can shrink the class to maybe fifteen, twenty kids to a class? And like, twenty kids, there's a lot of kids to handle in one class. I know, when you've got twenty young kids, there's a lot of, you know, for one teacher, it's like stressful. And I don't know how much they can teach when they're stressful. So I was wondering, if you do get these sixteen teachers, is there any, in your future, maybe to shrink these classes and make smaller classes so kids can...
I think the whole plan with this is to shrink its adult-to-student ratio. So Ms. Lamboy spoke about paraprofessionals. We're going to have adding paraprofessionals to every first-grade classroom. And the reason for that is we know that students are learning to read in kindergarten and first grade. So an extra person in those classrooms, they can take kids and do smaller group work with them, smaller reading groups. So when you walk into a classroom, you can, you will see maybe three adults in a classroom working with, if the class is twenty kids, twenty-one kids, seven kids in a group with one adult working. And the kids are getting that small group instruction. That's how we reduce class size in Chelsea.
Another question, too.
Last question. Last question. We have to fire the department outside.
Okay. Is there any in your, in the future, do you think the school would have to increase with another school? Because there's a lot of children. Do you think the city would have to build another school?
I believe that would depend on our enrollment projections. And right now, our enrollment projections were slated to go up back up to six thousand two hundred. If our enrollment projections project that we are going to be receiving more kids in the future, that's something that we would need to study and do a feasibility study.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'll let you state any last comments before we allow the chief, who's patiently waiting outside. Do you have anything else to say?
I do not at this time. Just wanted to say thank you for your support during this pandemic and during this extremely challenging year.
Absolutely. Thank you. We're going to move on now to page ninety-three, the Fire Department. At this time, I'll be stepping outside. Leo, you want to take over? Oh, we're on page ninety-three. Nine-three. Yeah.
The numbers are on ninety-five.
Fire?
Fire, yes.
We all set, gentlemen?
Yes.
It's on you.
Ready?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Chief Albanese. I've been the chief of department for the past five years. The Chelsea Fire Department primarily responds to fires and emergency medical incidents within the city and our mutually communities. However, the modern fire service demands that we take an all-hazards approach to providing for the safety of the public. This means we also respond to and mitigate hazardous materials incidents and have specialized training and respond to emergencies in the technical rescue disciplines that include high-angle rescue, trench rescue, confined space, structural collapse, machinery entrapment, and water rescue. The department is also trained in active shooter hostile events and weapons of mass destruction. We provide public assistance to residents with water emergencies, gas emergencies, patient lifts and carries, and smoke detector and carbon monoxide detection assistance and installation. We are assisted in the delivery of advanced life support emergency medical services by our EMS provider, Cataldo Ambulance. We are a well-equipped department made up of five divisions, operations, administration, training, hazardous materials, and fire prevention. The operation division consists of three pumpers, one aerial ladder, one tower ladder, and a shift commander, staffed twenty-four-seven, running from three stations. We also operate a heavy rescue and a squad unit that are in-service, unstaffed, to support special operations and special services. Our fire prevention division is extremely active and provides plan review, code enforcement, and public education. The greatest danger within the city remains the risk of structure fires in our densely settled neighborhoods that have the potential for rapid fire spread. Fires today burn hotter and faster than ever before due to the prevalent use of both plastics and other man-made materials in building contents and energy-efficient windows. Fires in structures today flash over, which means spreading into full-room involvement in two or three minutes as opposed to twenty or thirty minutes that it took a legacy fire to flash over twenty or thirty years ago. The FY22 budget was designed to meet the uncertainty of the post-pandemic world while allocating the department sufficient resources to continue providing all of the current services at current staffing levels. Overall, this budget is five hundred thousand dollars lower than the FY21 budget, which is primarily a result of the table of organization being set at ninety-seven members plus one office administrator, down from one hundred and two members. This budget takes into consideration the expiration of the SAFER grant that was in place for three years. Over the last years, the department has responded to the pandemic with great professionalism. We established an action plan and constantly updated guidelines to meet the ever-changing threat of the virus. I'm proud to say that we remained viable and addressed all emergency needs of the city twenty-four-seven while sustaining a very low COVID infection rate. We took delivery of a new pumper through the capital improvement plan, bringing the current average age of our frontline apparatus down to five years. We focused heavily on a back-to-basics training program, commanding control training, and firefighter safety and wellness. Over the past five years, we have operated within our budget and have not required any supplemental funding. We have obtained three point six million dollars in federal funding and have improved our labor-management relationship with the help of the union leadership. Our goal for this year is to continue the current focus on training, commanding control, and pre-operational planning. We hope to have a new contract in place in the near future. And lastly, I have to note, as I have in the past, that it's always been my contention that additional frontline staffing is required with our community risk assessment. And finding ways to responsibly budget for that is always under consideration. And I have a copy of these comments I can email out.
Sounds good. At this time, I'll open up to questions for the Fire Department. Any my colleagues to the right? How about to the left? I don't know. Mr. Dunn, do you have anything you want to contribute?
Just to emphasize that I believe the chief is doing a fantastic job with his budget. We remember from years past that we had difficulties with the overtime and other things that were not within the scope that we had hoped they would be. But I think the chief has proven that he's able to do this exceptionally well, and we commend him for that. The five hundred thousand dollar drop in the regular salaries, as the chief said, it's five positions that are not funded in this year's budget. I think there's a couple that are coming in at low funding, eighty percent funding, for a supplemental amount roughly a third, a third of what the regular amount would be. So this is a fantastic budget, and I believe the chief should be commended for it.
I can add that we do have a SAFER grant that has been, an application that's been submitted. In the past, I've been very confident with all of our grants, but there's so many different things going on and much more people applying for them. And in the past, it was a partial reimbursement. This grant is three years, a hundred percent salary. So if we are successful, we'll get four positions out of this budget, one hundred percent covered for the next four years. And again, we planned this at ninety-seven. Ninety-seven puts four firefighters on every in-service apparatus and fills all of our staff positions. The one oh two number that we've been running with, we were doing with prior SAFER help, a prior SAFER grant, so. We probably know by July or August if we receive the grant. I'm somewhat confident, but it is, there's a lot of factors with the way that it's presented this year and many more departments being interested. and many more departments being interested.
Has the medical calls increased to the Fire Department?
So during COVID, our runs were down, were decreased, probably about 1,000 units from year to year. And that was, you know, pandemic people staying home, much less activity on the roadways, much less industrial work. But I can tell you that since things have gotten better, we can already see the call volume picking up with people back to work and back on the road.
And we responded to that fire in Revere last week.
Excuse me?
The fire in Revere last week was the five alama.
Oh, yeah. We respond, we are on the second alarm in Revere, Everett. We respond to many of the fires in the immediate metro area. And we responded with a pump and a truck and spent a good portion of the day there.
And when we do that, do we backfill to cover our stations?
Yeah, because, in this case, we did. Because the metro fire resources were so depleted because they were five alarms in, we have, again, our fleet is fantastic right now. We have a very good frontline fleet, thanks to the support of the city manager and the council that's provided the funding for the CIP. We have a really, really good fleet, and we have very reliable reserve apparatus. So once this went above four alarms, we put in service an extra pump and an extra ladder truck to cover the city because the area was so depleted with aerial ladders.
My last question is actually, the Fire Department has been involved with the Alama Society at the science fair at the park, Marginal. And you bring out the new rescue truck, which has been a real thing for the kids to be able to see with all the various equipment that is carried on that vehicle. I think it's been a real plus, I think, in this community.
We are very well-equipped. This department is very well-trained. We have about 30 special operations technicians. We were able to acquire the heavy rescue through the firefighter's grant program. And to a CIP, we have a really good frontline fleet, we really do.
Right. And we mentioned the overtime. And how much have we saved this year compared to what we had spent last year on overtime?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time here.
On the overtime, how much do we save this year?
Well, so the overtime budget, we're going to come in probably $200,000 under in this year. But I caution you that, and I'm not asking to reduce that. We were not able to use all of the overtime that we had earmarked for training because of COVID restrictions. So even though we're going to be on the budget this year with overtime, I'm asking you for the same amount. And as I've stated in the past with the overtime, right now, our salaries in the new budget are about 8.5 million. The overtime budget formula that has been very consistent is about 15% of your salary line for overtime. So that 15% is 1.275, and we're budgeting 1.25. So it's very responsibly budgeted. When we can do better and come under budget, we do. But about 100,000 of that should have been earmarked for training evolutions that we couldn't get to with COVID.
Counselor.
One of my questions is, in the foreseeable future, do you think maybe the city would need another fire station?
This city is very well-covered with the three locations that we run from. If we compare what we run for frontline resources with Everett, Revere, East Boston, other similar agencies, the three stations is not the issue. Now, do we need maybe a new station or an improved station down the road as a replacement? That might be something. But right now, we have three buildings that we're running out of that have been renovated well, that are situationally in good positions. And I would not think that that's an immediate need. Obviously, they're old buildings, it's an old city, but they're very functional, they're very well-placed. If anything, the priority would be, as time goes on, to increase staffing on the apparatus that we already have, not an additional station or additional apparatus. Additional staffing on what we have would be the most prudent use of additional resources.
More equipment. More equipment.
Not more equipment, more people on the equipment that we have in place.
Oh, man. Another, my last question is, during COVID-19, did the Fire Department assist many people?
During COVID-19, I'm very proud of how this department ran. We had a very low infection rate. We only had 12 firefighters out of 100 that tested positive. And we're together in living quarters 24/7. And they did an excellent job with masking, with distancing, with protecting themselves on calls. But we had a very low infection rate compared to other municipal fire departments. Again, the overall call volume was down mostly because there was much less activity out there. So it's not a bad thing that we were, call volume was down. But the preparation and the work that went into maintaining services for COVID-19 took a lot of resources.
That's great. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor.
So just to follow up on that real quick, and then I've got another question. During COVID, was there an uptick in the alcohol calls and the opioid calls during COVID?
To my knowledge, I don't really track alcohol-related issues. That would be more for the police to track for you. But the response to overdoses was down somewhat significantly during COVID. And we have seen, I would guess, I haven't looked at the data yet for May, and I haven't really analyzed the end of April yet. But I can already tell you that I believe there's an uptick already.
There's an uptick already coming back?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's, I'm glad there was a downturn in it during COVID at least, because we've heard stories about how more people had more time to, you know, get high. But that's good news, bad news on the uptick. So I noticed here on the 21 key accomplishments, began an extensive renovation of the Prattville Fire Station, which hadn't received any upgrades since 1975. Can you just, can you just go over that real quick?
Yeah, actually, that's ongoing right now. So the Prattville Station, since it was built in 75, hasn't received any attention. It wasn't really made for a modern fire department's needs with separation and just privacy issues taken into effect. So basically, the project is taking a dormitory, that was one big open dormitory, and creating four different sleeping quarters for firefighters, renovating the kitchen. It basically takes all the living quarters. And I got to say, DPW, Fidel, the commissioner has done a great job in supporting the building needs. And the amount of work we're getting done for what they're spending, I think we're getting a really good value for our dollar. The project there is under 300,000, and it's going to basically renovate all of the living quarters.
And when is that project going to be completed, estimated?
Around July 1st.
Beautiful. Just in time for all the fireworks calls. Just in time for all the fireworks calls.
Yeah, but yeah, we're hoping for July 1st. It's a matter of, the contractor's doing a great job. We have no complaints. Things are going well there.
I'm glad. I walk by there every day, so.
Yeah, we know.
Thank you.
Counselor Lopez, you had a question?
Yeah, so going back to counsel's recuable question. With the addition of Chelsea Houston on Central Avenue, they're going to build, how many apartments? 290 something or 320?
320.
Yeah, and then 170 Cottage. They're going to build another, I think, 40 or 62 apartments. You don't think it's a need for another fire station around that way?
Well, like I said, I'm a fire chief. I'll take every fire station, every fire truck you'll give me. But with the cost of these things, I'm telling you that the more money that I have to spend would be spent on more firefighters on the apparatus that we have. We now staff all of our frontline fire apparatus with three firefighters, an officer, and two firefighters. But there's three firefighters on each apparatus. I strongly believe the funding, the staffing should be four firefighters on every apparatus in this inner-city environment. Not many metro departments have that, some do. But I think the trend is more towards more firefighters to handle the incidents when they get there than another apparatus with the same number of firefighters on each. So if you were going to give me 20 extra positions, I would say they belong in fourth-man positions on the apparatus that we have. For two square miles, the three stations provides us sufficient coverage and response times within the ISO guidelines.
So what you need is just more firefighters instead of another station, is that's what you're trying to say?
Yeah, I would say that the staffing is the key.
We got a question from our counsel Garcia, we're just trying to get her up on the screen. You can bear with us. Little technical difficulties.
No, I was just checking to see if Judith was in waiting. She raised her hand earlier. If you see her waiting, just admit her.
She's not there? Did she didn't want a question? Okay. Right, no, what she's not on the question. Seeing no, seeing no further questions for the chief. You want to make a closing statement to the council?
I'm good. I would like the support for this budget. We've been very responsible. We haven't gone over budget. It's very reasonably prepared, and I would appreciate your support.
I would end by saying, yeah, you have done a good job since you've been here and bringing some.
I'd also say that the chief has been very aggressive in obtaining grants for his equipment, his safety equipment vehicles, various things. So we're appreciative of that as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to go to, going to go to the city manager's budget.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, so my budget in total has increased by $5,000. But there's two sort of major changes that are going on in this budget, and I'll explain them to you. So first, last year, we had five people in my office. It was myself, Ned, Lord Ace, Kate, and Manway. Manway was doing communications work for the city. And we had budgeted her, she was a part-time employee. We had budgeted her at about $34,000. Manway left to take a full-time position in the school department, and this happened this spring. And so what we have proposed in this budget is to not rehire someone for that position, but instead have Lord Ace absorb some of that communications work and contract out some of the balance, and it comes to about a wash. So one thing you'll see different from last year is that the salary number is down, and that is because we're no longer paying for that fifth salary position. There's only four of us that are in the salary. Lord Ace will absorb and has been promoted, and I sent you an email this morning, to a new communications-type position. Frankly, she was doing much of that work during the course of the pandemic, was very, very effective at it. So we have promoted her to this communications position. It's the, her salary is at, she went up one grade in the exempt salary schedule. She went from an MM3 to an MM4. This number in the budget is a little low. We put a placeholder in there. This is, this budget that's in, this number that's in the budget is reflecting in MM4 Step 2. And we ended up putting her at MM4 Step 5. So the salary effective July 1 for MM4 Step 5 is $58,000. So it's an additional $4,000. That money will be available, the difference is available in the salary reserve account, which I'll get to next or shortly before we leave here. So that is one change from the number in the budget. Lord Ace's number actually will be a little higher than what's reflected on July 1 than that. But her role is changing, and she's taking on some of what Manway was doing. And in addition to that, the balance of some of this communications work, we flipped into the contract services line item. So that's why you see that new $25,000 number. That's going to be for some outsourcing of some of the communications work that Manway was doing, some of the website work, a little bit of graphic design work. And so we're going to hire outside contractors to do that. As I said, this kind of balances out, and we're not hiring another employee. The second major change is that Kate has moved. So there's a vacancy in my fourth position in my office. I would ask you to fund that. My office has always had four positions. There is just too much work in that office for myself, Ned, and Lord Ace to effectively accomplish. So I'd ask that you fund the position, even though it is vacant at the moment. I would like to start looking to hire someone, but obviously can't do that until I know that the position will be funded. Those are the two major changes going on in the office. The only other real change in my budget is that my advertising number, I bumped up to 2,000 just given how much we spend on various ads. 1,000 was not enough. We had to make some internal transfers this year. And we added a new 1,500 line item under software license. And that is for the license for Constant Contact, which is a software that allows us to better communicate with people via email. And so that has a price to it, and that's the $1,500 annual cost for the Constant Contact license that we have in my office now. So that's my proposed budget in a nutshell.
Questions, Counselor Brown.
So you said Kate moved. Did she move out of City Hall?
No, Kate was hired by Fidel as the new business manager. So his business manager left, Kate applied for the job. She's been hired as the business manager in the DPW.
So did she take the business manager's salary, or did she take her salary from your office?
No, she took the business manager's salary. That's a union, she moved from an exempt position. The business manager's position is a union position. She's getting paid exactly what the prior business manager was getting.
So do you still have the previous salary from Kate?
Yes, that's the vacancy in my office. I'm asking the council not to cut it. I would like to fill that. What I'm telling the council is that it is impossible for me to do the work in my office with just three people. I really need a fourth person in there to do this job.
And what's that salary?
This is what Kate was making, $84,229.
Is that the full salary?
That's the full salary, yes, for that position, $84,229.
Thank you.
To my left, any questions?
Taylor.
Is, so you intend to hire somebody to fill that $84,000 slot? Or are you going to hire somebody at a lower?
I would advertise it at that same, that's in the MM7 salary scale. I would hire someone on that salary scale. Depending on their experience, they might come in a little lower than this, a tiny bit higher. But it'd be roughly in that range. I think that's the MM7. That's the MM7.6, so that's high up on that grade. Typically, we hire people, new people at a little lower. So this person could come in a little lower. in a little lower. Kate was still here, oh, no, she wasn't here, we knew she was going, so we put it vacant, but we put her salary in. But it's possible that a new person could come in a little lower on the scale, but it will be at that same grade, which is the MM7 grade.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I guess I came in the right time. Anything else? I don't even know where we are right now. Sorry, I just came in.
So I have DEI payroll, and then we have three other quick ones.
Oh, so I missed your presentation, right? Is that what I missed?
Yes.
Okay, we'll, I won't go backwards, we'll catch up one-on-one later on. Page sixty-two?
Yes, so I apologize, because this is actually sixty-three, and there's no numbers here, but I'm going to tell you, you approved a budget for this office in a free cash appropriation, and you approved three simple line items for it. Salary, which is 112.5. That's what the new DEI director will make. That's the department head pretty much salary level for department heads. You also approved money for training, a total of, now, you approved a budget for basically a year and a half. We expected that we would have had this position hired six months ago, and we just didn't. So I have about a year and a half worth of salary and money for training and contract services, so I don't expect to use all that money this year. I certainly won't use the $170,000 you set aside for salary, I'm only going to use 112. And you set aside a total of contract services money, $45,000, and training money, $30,000. So those are the line items that exist in this budget. So she has a total that she could spend, this is all she's going to spend in salary. We're not hiring anyone else for this office. But she has a total available for her in contract support of $45,000. She has a total of $30,000 in training. She will use some of each of those parts in FY22. I doubt she'll use it all, and so we'll have some money left over for FY23 that we'll use in her FY23 budget. But those are the, those are the three line items in this, and so we have her salary, she's got money for contract services, and she's got money for training.
Any other questions? Or any questions? Council Lopez?
Is the department going to be one person only?
For the foreseeable future, yes. It could grow, but for FY22, and I would say almost certainly FY23, it will be a one-person department, as I proposed to the council when you approved this department. We said that for the first two years, it was likely to be a one-person department. That's what I anticipate.
Any other questions? Seeing none, okay, moving on to the next one.
So we talked a little bit about payroll, we talked a lot about payroll, actually, in connection with the auditor's budget. The number, the payroll department is listed on page 53, and the numbers are on page 54, and this department, as we propose it, will be made up of two people. Wendy, who will become the supervisor, and that's the salary, and we will hire a payroll specialist under her. It'll be a two-person unit within the Treasury Department, kind of how central billing works as a separate unit within DPW. So this is how this will work. It will take a little bit to do this transition. I expect it to happen sometime in the fall. I have to find an office for them. We're thinking of, they may end up up here next to HR, there's a little office there, but that remains to be seen. I just don't, this will not take place on July 1. This is going to take a little transition time, but the end result would be to have this payroll unit, and this would be the budget for that office. Most of it is in salary, and then there is a little bit of money in each of these buckets. And Ed, who helped design this budget for that office, can talk a little bit about what, why he allocated these funds for these various buckets. Could you do that?
Yes, so we have the salaries that Tom had mentioned, and I think we had talked, when I talked about auditing, about the unused sick leave and some of those things that came over as well. On the operations side, the rent-lease equipment, that's for a copier machine, that would be in the office that doesn't have one currently. Professional services, the $20,000, we foresee that to be a use, if you have a project that's related to payroll that you need some unit support or some consultant support to achieve, you'd use this money to do that. We expect that the decentralization project that we talked about earlier, which is already funded through partly my budget and partly schools, will be at the end of '22 nearly finished. We may be ready for something more after that, and that perhaps could come from this $20,000. That would be the self-service portal and some of the other things that are associated there. But the forms we talked about before, the 1475, that's the W-2 forms, the $500 of travel and conferences, we anticipate that the payroll unit may need to have some kind of training or continuing education. And the dues and subscriptions, I think Wendy is already a member of a payroll association for dues and subscriptions, and there may be some training that she'd like to pursue, or perhaps the new person would need some training as well. So these are fairly educated guesses on how much we need. Of course, the professional services is not really known at this point until we determine next steps.
It'll be overseen by Treasury, but not in the Treasury office. I recommend against having it in the middle office on the second floor. It's too noisy, and payroll requires concentration and.
We'll find a separate office for them, but I don't have it specifically identified as of yet.
Yeah, I mean, Patrice will oversee it, yes, but it's not going to be in her office. It'll be in a separate spot.
Okay. Have a question?
Question on the line of the vacancy on page 54, payroll specialist?
Yes.
Now, that's the position that Wendy at one time was holding, correct?
No. No, Wendy's the payroll supervisor in auditing, so she retains.
Right, she's becoming a payroll supervisor.
No, she already is, but she's, her current, her current job is payroll slash accounts payable supervisor.
So when did she become the supervisor?
When she was hired.
When was that?
Two years ago.
Okay, what was her salary?
It's always been on the high end of SEIU.
This is her, this is her, this is a union position. This is her salary right now.
I thought you made $65,000. I thought you caught $65,000 out earlier.
No, well, I think it's 78. 65 would have been the savings in the auditing department. Because there's a net, because we had some other step increases from the others as well, so it's not a 78 coming out. It was like a six, you're right, it was a 65 coming out of auditing, but a 78 here.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. Wendy.
That's why I was asking a financial person, that's.
This employee is not getting any change in pay. This is, her pay would be this whether she moved or not. She is the current payroll supervisor. This is a union position. This is her required salary for fiscal year 2022, regardless of whether she moves to this payroll unit or stays in auditing.
But she is moving to it, though. You keep saying regardless.
Well, it's a.
It depends on your support of this budget.
If it doesn't go through, she comes back to auditing at the same salary.
But if she just, so, so there's no, there's no need to hold her back, there's nothing changing, she's just going from one.
For her, there's no change. It's the same level of salary, except that the accounts payable portion of her job would come out of her job description. She would no longer be associated with accounts payable. It's strictly payroll. We need to have her focused on payroll only. And that would also mean that the other person in my office has the payroll function of her job taken away and sticks with accounts payable and finances.
And the second position, we're assuming a certain slot within the union pay scale, and we're assuming this is an SEIU position. We're assuming it would come in at a grade eight, step five. I mean, that's kind of a guesstimate, but that's roughly where we think this will, this job description will end up.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, there's one other thing I had forgot to mention, and I'm seeing in here the office equipment. So the office equipment is the specialized printer that is required for the payroll operation. We have currently a specialized printer in the auditing department, but no backup to that. So I had talked with Ramon, and we had recommended having my office's machine as the backup and a newer machine provided for the payroll office.
And I take it that no matter what those, whether it's direct deposit or whatever, those, they have to be issued and printed and mailed out?
Currently, yes. When we get to decentralization and employee self-service, I don't think the need will exist. Except for the paychecks.
It's the paycheck. At no point in time does it, does it become in the electric, become in electronic.
Transfer?
No, 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 not a transfer. What I'm saying is, at what point don't you have to print any more pay stubs and mail pay stubs and deliver pay stubs and not just do an electronic?
At the tail end of decentralization, when we get to the employee self-service portal, you won't need the pay stubs any longer because people can sign in. I think there's also a potential for us to email the stubs to an email address rather than the employee self-service portal.
Correct.
We could do that, and that would eliminate the need for the pay advice.
And the paper, and the paperwork and printer.
We tried when we went into COVID to bring everybody over to direct deposit, and there was still some people that didn't want to do that, so we've got a, we've got.
We can't force it without negotiation.
So we still have a few dozen of those, and the school department has more.
You know, if I wanted, if I want my bank statement now mailed to me, they charge me. Can we charge? Can we do that and say, we're going to charge you to get paid?
I know, if you're not.
Pretty tough.
It was frustrating during COVID. It's like we were warning them.
But we, at the state, you don't have any of that. It's at your fingertips. If you have a computer, you can print it anytime you want, you can alter.
We need to go papers.
Yeah. So. We'll get there, it's just in phases, so we're decentralizing first, and then we look at the other options available after that.
Okay.
Thought we would be there.
So there's just three small items left on here. The first is the budget reserve fund, so this is $590,000, and the reason why it's so high is that we have three, at the time we proposed this, we had three unions that still had not negotiated contracts and for which their raises aren't reflected in this budget. The police patrol, fire, and E911, those are the three remaining contracts. Police patrol settled this week. Their union accepted the contract offer. That matter will be before you on June 7. It's almost identical to the deal that was given to the superior officers, except that patrol will be granted if you've accepted a $1,000 bonus for this year in lieu of taking a zero. The Spears officers took a zero and did not get a bonus. Patrol officers took the same percentages, but understand, percentages for patrol officers are not worth what they are for spear officers. Make more money, so the same percentage is worth much more to a superior officer, so the patrol officers negotiated $8,000 bonus for FY21. That, none of that is included in here, so if you approve that, we'll do a transfer from salary reserve to them sometime during the course of FY22.
Body cams?
I'm sorry?
The body cams?
Body cameras were accepted, yes. Same body camera.
So with the $1,000 stipend or whatever you want to, you still get the $500 on the Narcan?
Yeah, that was negotiated.
And no other, no other stipends included, correct?
Correct. They did get a change. I think I mentioned this, the same sort of change the spear officers got, which is there is an educational benefit, so there's this multi-tiered system for the educational benefit, and I agree that if you had been there for seven years, you get to go back to the sort of mid-tier, not the high.
So not five years, there's seven?
Seven years, yes.
Okay.
So in addition to that, patrol officer's salary increase, which is in here, we're also have money set aside for raises for fire, which have not yet started negotiations, and for E911, which have not yet started negotiations. That's the reason for the $5,000.
Tom, I meant to ask this to the schools, but we're on, I have a question. Having experienced closing down for a period of time, one of the things that I experienced, you know, the experience was, because I was closed down for that period of time, all my utility costs went down. So my question is, during the time period that we were remote in the school department in particular, and we budgeted in the previous year X amount of dollars to pay for lights, heating, and all utilities, was there any money left over, and did that money get transferred to other accounts, or what happened to that money?
I don't think it'll be transferred to other accounts. We only had a short window in fiscal '23 months, so from March to June, but '21, you're going to see it more, but it will go to free cash. It'll remain in the line that it was budgeted in and create a surplus on the expense line, and that would flow to free cash.
Yeah, assuming there are surpluses, I don't know. I mean, we were, certainly had many less employees in here, but we had, every light was on, we were working, there were always people in here.
Well, I'm just.
Senior center, you know, that was kind of shut down.
Right, I'm just curious, as far, all right, so in particular, I'm just thinking the schools.
Yes.
You know, you didn't have to heat the school, you didn't have to heat, and you didn't have to AC as much, basically.
So they may have had some.
They were like, so I'm just curious, what happens to that money that was projected, not used, and then, is it sitting there somewhere in some account?
School department money, if it's not spent, falls to the bottom line?
It does. It's going to be, I mean, there's a little bit more of a formula necessary because of that school spending for them, but if they have surplus, then it would flow to the bottom line as a free cash supplement after the DOR reviews it. On our side, I'm just looking quickly at structures and grounds in the DPW budget, and I see there's a slight surplus of $4,000 in heating so far, $15,000 in lighting, building maintenance, $45,000, so those, I don't know, we still have another month to go, so I don't know what expenses will come in against those, but we can look at the end of the closeout period to see what we have.
The library.
You can see it in police department, you can see it in fire. I think the, most of the, most of the buildings are paid out of DPW for utilities, but I think police budgets their own.
The library?
Yep. So we'll, but a library might be, I'm not sure, I'd have to check to see if library's part of DPW or it's.
Human services?
It's possible we could have some surplus. It'll just fall to the bottom line.
Okay.
Yeah.
The next item is debt service, 169, principal and interest payment. This comes right off our bond schedule. These numbers are provided to us by bond counselors to what we owe for principal and interest, and so these are precise, these are pretty precise numbers for what we will owe in fiscal year '22 for the borrowing we have out there.
What's built into that is the FY21 Beach Street project that was part of the CIP for '21, so that's now included roughly $3 million.
And that was borrowed, and these numbers reflect what the total cost is. The last item is the inter-fund transfers on page 173. This is really just two items, so transfers to capital project, that's the money that we, that's the required contractual obligation to enterprise for our long-term enterprise lease contract, so we have some commitments to them for capital monies that they spend. In return, they guarantee us a certain level of excise tax, which they've always met, and even this year, they've more than met it. So last year, we reduced it because we had. So last year, we reduced it 'cause we had some excess in this account and we used the excess to meet this 1.2. We still have a little excess in this account, but I'd rather hold it for when we really need it. We can get away with going back to the normal 1.285, which is required by their contract. And then the last item, transfers to trust fund. This is the amount we set aside every year for our very large OPEB outstanding liability. I know it's sort of immaterial for a $180 million liability of putting aside $300,000, but the credit agencies want to see this. We didn't do it last year and they understood that in COVID, but they will not understand it every year. So we're gonna return to what we've always done, which is we put a little bit aside. Now, I've said many times, we have a plan for covering the OPEB liability. Our OPEB liability is dropping mostly because, and I would, I think it's gonna be reflected. I'll be surprised if it doesn't drop a good amount in this most recent analysis that we're going to do in this year because this movement of our retirees, this forced movement to Medicare is saving us in medical costs and I think it will be reflected. We'll see, but my guess is our number might drop. So once we pay off our outstanding liability on our regular pension, which will be, we're scheduled to pay it off in 2029, we pay, by then, we'll be paying $14 million a year in unfunded liability. Once that's gone, we'll just switch that to the OPEB liability. And we'll be paid off in 2070.
Just in time for my retirement. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, everybody, for tonight. We'll see you back tomorrow.
See you tomorrow night.
Same bat time, same bat channel.